Placed in queue and trust is a reminder, once again, we have a new microphone system and our guest to have a new microphone system, which is very, very sensitive and it picks up everything that in conversation to the board. So just be aware of that. And so unless prompted upon by myself, please refrain from speaking. Uh, when it's not your turn, we move on to item one point one landing punishment, the opening prayer of Father International Anthem. And now staff to please lead us off with the landing management.
Alton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many first nations in the Maytee.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Maytee.
These lands surrounding the great lake.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
It's a honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. I now ask student trustee Hannah, would you please lead us in the opening prayer of the Our Father and the National Anthem?
Okay, uh, please join me in the sign of our faith, Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen? Loving God, we often ask things of you without acknowledging your endless love and greatness. We ask without being grateful for the wonderful world you have given us, for your love in and of itself is worth more than what we could ever repay. As we pray, we also remember that today is the feast day of Saint Helion of Gaza. An avid firmant and monk born in Egypt who brought Christianity to Palestine. Now hear us when we pray.
Lord, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, as it is in heaven. It must be said, that there is a great degree of discernment in this world, and it is created by those who have the patience to do this. And through these things, we shall see the fruits of our work.
Thank you, student trustee Hannah. Item one point two motions arising from in camera, there were no motions arising from in camera that will require a vote in the public session. We move on to item number one point three, commissioning declaration of four on you trustee Milton Watts two and three. I would now like to welcome trustee elect Murphy, who was voted in as trustee for Milton Watts two and three at the October ninth twenty twenty five special board meeting. I now invite Father Ranjan to offer his remarks and blessing to trustee elect Murphy. Uh, following his remarks, Father Ranjan will lead the commissioning service and will continue with the blessing and distribution of the Bible, which will be used by trustee elect Murphy for the declarations of office and the code of the parliament.
Jesus, light of the world, faithful witness of God's unbounded love has come to be in relationship with us as brother and lord. We are the people of God, the church, called through our activism to work with him in bringing his life to all. As Catholic, Catholic trustee, you have been chosen to stand up for the truth of Christ. Those who have chosen you, sacrifice of responsibility and good judgment. With the blessing of the church, we trust in your ability and desire to work for a successful education in our province and to inspire peace and harmony in the school system and community. I invite you to repeat this pledge after me. As a Catholic school trustee.
As a Catholic school trustee.
I promise to give Christian example each day.
I promise to give Christian example each day.
In all that I do and say.
In all that I do and say.
I pledge to work with others.
I pledge to work with others.
For the good of the youth.
For the good of the youth.
And trusted to our schools.
And trusted to our schools.
And to lead them.
And to lead them.
In the light of Jesus Christ.
In the light of Jesus Christ.
Above your head and ask for God's blessings. Blessed are you, Lord, our God, ruler, ruler of all the universe. You have chosen us in Jesus to be the people of light. Send your spirit into our hearts and let us share your love and light with all. Bless patron mercy in his work for your people and guide him always in your ways. Blessed are you, Lord, God, forever and ever. Everlasting God. When Jesus read in the synagogue at Nazareth, your son proclaimed the good news of salvation for which he would give up his life. Bless all who will read from these sacred texts as they read. Listen and reflect on your words of life, strengthen their faith so that what they read in hope, they may live in love and charity. We ask this through Christ our Lord and.
Thank you, Father Ranjan. Thank you. A trustee is obliged under the Education Act to make make a declaration of office and make a oath of allegiance before the Secretary of the Board or before a person so of grace. So now I shall ask the director to claim to the doors to reclaim.
I'd ask Patrick that you go repeat that for me. I, Patrick Murphy.
I, Patrick Murphy. Do solemnly declare that.
Do solemnly declare that.
I am not disqualified under any act.
And not disqualified under any act.
From being a member of the Halton Catholic District School Board.
From being a member of the Halton Catholic District School Board.
I will truly faithfully impartially.
I will truly faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my abilities.
And to the best of my ability.
Execute the office of board member.
Execute the office of board member.
And that I have not received and will not receive any payment.
And that I have not received and will not receive any payment.
Or reward or promise.
Or reward or promise.
Thereof for the exercise of any uh, partial like partiality.
Sorry, here we have.
Or reward or promise thereof.
Or reward or promise thereof.
For the exercise of any partiality.
For the exercise of any partiality.
Or malversion.
Or malversion.
Or other undue execution.
Or other undue execution.
Of the said office.
Of the said office.
And that I will disclose.
And that I will disclose.
Any pecuniary interests, any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act. As in accordance with and was the the next part of the, as required by.
As required by.
And in accordance with and in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act, the municipal conflict of interest act. So help me God, so help me God. Both a very short memory. Now these. I, Patrick Murphy.
I, Patrick Murphy.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To his majesty.
To his majesty.
King Charles the third.
King Charles the third.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you sign there and us and you sign away. Love to family reunion after about this.
Thank you. Congratulations trustee Murphy. Would you like to say a few words?
Uh, only that I look forward to working with you all and and I take the oath that I gave today seriously and will do my best to be collaborative and work in the best interest of the board.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. With that, we shall move on to our next order of business, item number two, which is the approval of the agenda. Uh, may I have the agenda up on the screen, please? Do we have any additions to the agenda and do trustees want any items removed from the consent agenda? Being none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for removal, please. Trustee, I knew notes, looking for a second or?
Oh, seconded.
Trustee Murphy, I saw your hand up. Thanks to the board. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Johan, sorry, trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Johan Chenada.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Adelie.
In favor.
Trustee Paris Ram.
In favor.
Trustee Hannah.
In favor.
Trustee Cara Bellon.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension motion carries. Uh, our next order of business is declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest declared by trustee on this? Yeah, six point one point one point five, the consent agenda of conflict of interest. So consent agenda does not take a vote because the motion has carried. So which is our item? Assess points. Which is the item? Six point one point five. Yeah. Okay, that's an action item. So for this item, you've got to fill in a form and give it to Rosie. So this is part of the consent agenda, right? Uh, no, oh, yeah, yeah. Actually, it's an action item though. But so you'll have to fill that form and you'll still have a conflict. We now move on to our next order of business, which is presentations, item four point one. Senior staff update, H C D S B twenty twenty five twenty six math achievement plan superintendent Skripak will present director client, thank you for this presentation.
Certainly, Chair, I would like to, of course, welcome Superintendent Skripak. Easy to say, difficult to spell. And with him tonight is Denise Greitmeyer, who is our math consultant. Certainly, one of the perennial focuses of student achievement in this board and other boards in the province of Ontario uh, is mathematics, achievement in mathematics. And so the superintendent will lead us in a presentation of this evening to look at the uh, the math achievement action plan for this coming year. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come and present today. This is part of my role as the mathematics lead for the Halton Catholic District School Board. I have a requirement to present to trustees and the board on actions and activities as we're doing and our math plan on a regular basis. Um, so as director Klein has mentioned, we have a new direct, uh, new consultant, Denise Greitmeyer. You welcome her report. Those of you who may be familiar with the Skripa, she recently came from St. Kateri Catholic Secondary School in Milton. So our twenty five twenty six math plan um, has some, pretty much some consistency to it from last year with a couple of, some additions, a couple of deletions due to changes in the way things go in our lives. Um, but the one constant I will start with is that it is linked to our multi-year strategic plan. We tend to focus quite a bit on achieving, that we hold high expectations for all. Um, and as you'll see throughout the presentation, there'll be connections to our multi-year strategic plan at the bottom of each slide indicating where we see the best fit. This is then further aligned with the ministries taking action about mathematics document. This document is what we use after looking at the multi-year strategic plan to further align our work with the province. Um, there's three main areas. I'm not going to read them all verbatim, but I will just say that the first one deals with the policies and curriculum that the ministry has presented to us. The second one deals with the content that's required for teachers to know how to teach that curriculum. And the third one is dealing with how do we know what our students know and how do we support them best? So in terms of resources in our board, um, our school board continues to support Math Up and Mathologies, the two digital resources that have been procured over the years. Teachers are encouraged to use these as there are in the Trillion List. At this point, four of the five that are on the million ministries Trillion List. For everybody to know, the Trillion List is a textbook list that the ministry presents to us that allows us to use those textbooks in our classrooms. Uh, so we use four of the five now. I'll mention what the fifth, fourth one is coming up. A supplementary resource includes Knowledge Hook and T B O Learn. At this point, we have revised all the scopes and sequences. We also call them long-range plans uh, to support the implementation of Math Up and Mathology. Uh, this includes combined grades in our school board. Uh, so teachers have access to these documents, are able to use them and then determine, we can take a look and say, okay, well, ideally you'd be teaching this. Teachers still do have some latitude in terms of how they want to teach and what order they wish to teach. Uh, but we are asking them to stay close to the Math Up and Mathology uh, resources. Um, so teachers were asked to submit their intention, whether they're following your scope and sequence, or whether they're using their own long-range plans based on the resources we provide by October the fifteenth. Um, the new addition is that we are piloting MyMathPath, and that's from Nelson. Uh, we have listened to the public and our teachers' concerns, since you noted in some of the surveys we produce on our student achievement plans, multi-year strategic plans and the budget that people sometimes are looking for paper textbooks. Uh, MyMathPath is a paper resource that we're piloting in our schools, making sure that we see alignment with the curriculum and with teachers' wishes. Uh, so currently this pilot base is at three schools. Um, all staff at that school is part of the agreement to use this, to do this pilot. All staff have agreed to use the textbook. And I'll be informing you more about how that pilot is going in the months to come. Uh, we do look forward to contacting parents, teachers and even students to see how they feel about the resource and how they feel about their learning base on that. Uh, Knowledge Hook is a tool that's provided, uh, that we have procured based on the digital tools funding that the ministry gives us. Uh, as you know, we do receive two different sources of funding. Uh, one of them is their R E P grants and the funding is specific from the ministry asking us to buy and procure a digital tool uh, that is responsive, that engages students, but also provides information to parents about their children's successes in school or where their youth might be. We have used this as part of our professional learning cycle for educators as well. Uh, this year, we're encouraging students to participate in something called the Mathalon, uh, which allows students to do more dedicated practice at home and in the classroom, but also kind of gamifies doing some mathematics work. Um, students are encouraged to keep practicing and as they complete more stars, if you will, that's the, that's the way that they know that much they're making progress. If they complete the Mathalon, then they end up getting a medal independent. Schools are recognized for their accomplishments. Um, we do continue to support math contests. Um, you will note that last year we talked about Caribou Math and the sudden passing of the founder of Caribou Math. That the, the decision's been made by the team at Caribou Math that they will not consider, continue providing that. So we are currently looking for an alternative. Um, but the good news is that the University of Waterloo does produce some very great resources and contests, uh, which we'll be using this year and continue to promote, uh, particularly in our secondary and grade seven and eight students. Um, also pleased to inform the board that our vice principal at St. Thomas of Clines, Melissa Giardina, um, has previously worked for the University of Waterloo and helping us coordinate a internal math competition for all of our students who are interested. Uh, so we're quite excited to have that and that'll be sometime in April. Um, so part of my role as a math lead is to meet with, I'll be meeting with all elementary school administrators in November and February to identify content areas where students struggle based on twenty four twenty five E Q A O data. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention at this point, I'm sure like you, like myself, you're rather excited to find out how our students did. That data is currently sitting with the ministry and not being informed at this point when to expect it. Um, we continue to wait with bated breath as I do. Um, I hope to be able to inform the board next month, this E Q A O lead, how our school was able, how our schools were able to do on our students. But once when this data is available, I'll be able to work with our principals to determine a focus that they might want to do in their school improvement plans um, and implement something we call the short learning cycle, um, which is basically focusing on that content area and using specific tools from Knowledge Hook to provide intervention work for students so that we can see results. Last year I presented on this and this is one of the examples of what we saw at a system level. Um, all of our grades set three to six students participated in this by way of their teacher, uh, where they completed the pre-task. And we saw some, uh, some great improvement in our students' abilities uh, based on the data that we see. And we hope to see that in E Q A O when that data is available to us too. Um, a high impact instructional practice to reform the board that, um, this is a document from the ministry that they're encouraging all of us to use. It was produced in twenty twenty. Uh, it focuses on strategies like deliberate practice, direct instruction, small group instruction, and the list is there for you to read. I, the system team here, the math team last year, uh, created a reflection rubric for staff to complete. So as they focus on their own professional learning um, in discussions with their administrator at the school. Uh, this would be a great tool to kind of think about where might be we be able to focus some of our instructional practices to improve the numeracy outcomes of our students. Um, so all schools should have one high-impact instructional practice and one content learning goal as part of their overall learning goal for their school. Uh, we continue to provide tutoring supports through Holton Catholic. Um, there is partnership that we'll continue to have with Holton Black Voices, um, in October, right now, right after progress reports are submitted. Um, teachers are asked to provide some names for us to be able to support students in grade nine. This year, the decision was also that any grade nine student who participated last year would automatically have the ability or option to continue to be supportive with tutoring. Um, we also ask, uh, we also ask for the support of our black graduation coach at St. Francis Xavier and St. Kateri to continue to encourage students to participate should they feel like maybe they are running out of time, but we know that, um, the tutoring supports are great and have a tremendous outcome for our students. Um, so continued participation is supported through the black graduation coach. At this point, what we provide is twelve tutoring sessions per student from October till January or from above March till June with a couple of extra sessions provided in June or January based on the fact that, uh, students are looking for that kind of support during exam time. Math interventions also take place in the classroom. Um, as I've presented in the past, we continue to provide, do the math as an intervention program for students in the area of numeracy. Uh, this is done in concert with this special education department. Um, so we have a, um, a person provided, uh, funding is provided by the ministry to provide for one person to support intervention practices within the board, and that is the role of, um, the person who, to support our special education teachers in doing this work. Uh, last but not least, we also have a priority school model. So we have four elementary schools and two secondary schools um, that we've identified as priority schools. Um, and that data is, and is collected in tandem with our research department to determine why a school would be a priority school. Uh, the ministry typically identifies these, but, um, in the past, and we only have one school identified in the past. We've had zero schools identified, um, which does answer one of the questions of why we may be one of the least funded boards in the province. But, um, it's because we don't, we don't tend to have a lot of high priority schools as defined by the ministry. Um, so there's a journey that we take that I've kind of outlined here on this slide uh, that talks about the types of supports that a primary school will be using with the itinerary. Um, and here's some of the activities that are, uh, itinerants would do. Um, rather than just having one short-term learning cycle, because of the extra support provided in this school, there's two short learning cycles that happen at the school. Uh, the teachers do provide the intervention work. Um, plus they, um, bring their expertise to bring together teams of teachers to talk about the content knowledge um, and also provide learning that's provided to us from the ministry. The elementary itinerants also support with the writing of E Q A O primary and junior. Um, so they do expose students to, um, what the test might look like. Uh, we know that because now it's online, uh, students tend to try to go much more quickly through it. So we provide some strategies as to how they can verify and ensure that the results of their work is valid. This would be an example of the work that happened in our priority schools, um, similar to what we did in our other school, uh, that all schools did. Um, of note is that there was a greater amount of students who were requiring intervention support in our priority schools, which ironically was a good sign to us that told us that we were in the right spot in the right schools. Uh, but we also saw that, um, we had a great, a dramatic decrease in the amount of students who required additional supports based on the work that was done in the school. Um, in our secondary school, the model looks slightly different because they are semesters. Um, but what we have is a clear focus on one W, um, M T H one W is the course code for grade nine mathematics, the de-streamed course. Um, so when they are in school, we're asking the itinerants to focus specifically in the classroom work with students. Um, sometimes one-to-one, sometimes small group, oftentimes supporting the teacher in the delivery of their instruction and providing some of the high-impact instructional practices while we're at it. Um, and so they're there from September to January. Um, what we have is two schools identified in the first semester and then those itinerants will move into two new schools in second semester to continue that work. Um, what we do then is collect the data. Uh, for example, we have a mid-year check-in based on E Q A O sample assessment questions. And in January, we collect the same questions and kind of analyze how our students did relative to those tasks. And then also, um, the E Q A O assessment that, um, when that data is available, we'll be able to compare. And I would also add in that our itinerants, when they're dedicated and implementing the schools, also provide lunch hour activities, support the implementation of math contests, and that's both in elementary and secondary. And they also then encourage students to part, and after hours, um, lunch, after-hours tutoring sessions are also provided for students. And that is the math plan, um, twenty five twenty six. Mr. Chair, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Skripak. Trustees, if we have questions for Superintendent Skripak, please leave your hand. First up is trustee Saunders. You have to hand up the other floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your excellent presentation. I'm just wondering, are we, are we sort of looking at opportunities to start integrating AI into math? Are there other things that are coming up that we're looking at and seeing how they can integrate?
Yeah, actually, that'll be part of a bigger plan. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair. Your new Mr. Chair. Uh, that'll be part of Superintendent Kroll and his team that are putting together some AI professional development sessions, one that's coming up. Um, and then in elementary, it'll be a little bit later because our elementary professional development days happened in February. Um, we'll be working carefully with, um, to the curriculum team in order to make sure that it's also, um, I highlights the work that can be done in mathematics.
Thank you. Yep, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering, are we, any kind of trends? Like we've got all these excellent programs. Are we seeing more kids taking advantage of the programs or we're seeing more kids using?
Are we seeing more kids taking advantage of the programs or we're seeing more kids using tutors? Are there sort of any general trends to sort of give us an idea what's happening? Where do you?
Yes, we are seeing an uptake in the activity with the Home Black Voices over the years and I can get more data for you as to how students, how many students have been participating. We have revised the program and revamped it over the years as well. Initially, we were also expanding into elementary, but we found that the participation rates dwindled with elementary students. But we found a higher uptake of secondary students. And that's kind of to your point about why we expanded it also to grade ten, because we have noticed some. Actually, what we observed was in September, students were reaching out to their tutors from last year saying, can I, can I, can I get you back? And we hadn't even made the decision. So based on that eagerness to get tutoring support again in present year, we expanded it to grade ten students.
Thank you, thank you. Saunders, up next, trustee Linton.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Skibek. Thank you. So under the column resources, one of the bullet states, all educators will indicate whether they're following HCDSB scope or end sequence or on their own by October the fifteenth. So once you get that data, what, what will be potentially your next steps?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, so what, the main purpose of this, there's a few. Number one, we want to make sure that everybody's familiar with the curriculum and that they don't miss any types of expectations because really in mathematics, there isn't any optional exercises. There's, you know, the curriculum that asks us to teach this in totality. What we've noticed and observed is over the years, if any strands or specific expectations are missing, it does create some missing gaps in student learning in the future. The, one of the main purposes behind collecting this as well is for administrators to then be able to support teachers and understanding, you know, we have, we continue to have the expectation because the ministry has it, that there's three hundred minutes of instruction. So for instance, if they missed a day because there is a mass, when might that be taken up? And the principal can follow up and see, okay, so how are we doing with the scope and sequence? Finally, when it comes to professional development, when teachers identify and the school identifies a specific content area, knowing when the teachers are teaching that helps with the planning of the professional development and procuring supply teachers. But for example, we've identified that spatial reasoning is the area where you're going to be teaching measurement in November based on the long range plans. The principal can take a look and say, okay, so this is the time we're going to do a short learning cycle. Maybe we can bring in a representative of Knowledge Hook to come support us and we'll book it in advance. So it allows for more detailed planning.
Thank you. I think I missed that spatial class when I went to school because I can't tell you what fifty P is, I need a measuring tape. But anyhow, I digress. My second question would be, you mentioned the quick EQAO. When do we normally get that data?
Great, so much for this.
In the very distant past, that data was available to school boards at the end of August and released to the public no later than the end of September. At present, the only time that that had changed was when the data wasn't available after COVID. So at this time, I really can't speak to what the delay is. I can assure you that as soon as I get it, you'll probably hear celebrating the fact that I can actually take a look.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent Skibek, up next. Up next, trustee Carabella, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So it's been a few years since de-streaming. Can you clarify what goal it wanted to achieve and if it's achieving its goal?
So the main thrust from the ministry, I'm, I'm talking from our perspective, is an equitable outcome for students and an equitable outcome in terms of their pathways. I believe this would be the first year we could really take a look at some pathways data to take a look and determine how students are doing. I've said this before that you might believe that the job of education is to open doors, not close some. And oftentimes by making a choice at a very early stage in students' careers and trajectories in education, we may miss an opportunity to allow a student to flourish and demonstrate their true ability. Grade nine, I guess, you know, at this point, the research was determined that grade nine is still a little bit too early for students to be making the transition and deciding what a future career path could look like and a choice. What I can tell you with our data from a preliminary glance is that we continue to see improvement in our one W scores. We don't see a diminishment in student outcomes. We don't see a diminishment in students taking grade ten academic or applied courses. In fact, what we have was in the past few years, and I can present more data later on. We have noticed more students taking grade ten academic courses in comparison to taking grade ten applied. Having said that, what we want to make sure is that students have all their options available. And by being able to take whichever course they prefer, based on whatever career path they want to take. This one W course kind of ensures that in grade nine, that decision hasn't, hasn't caused them to not have that option later on in life.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, follow.
No, thank you.
I see no other hands up.
Quite a privilege, Mr. Chair. I don't have access to the, to the chat, so I'll just raise my hand. And I'll go to the end of the queue.
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Having experience with a child in secondary and the need to find tutors for math. Some families have the, the luxury or the, are able to pay for private tutoring. But there's a lot of families in our board who wouldn't be able to. So can you speak to the need, the, the volume of tutoring? Are we meeting the need? And where is the funding coming from? Do we need to look as a board at donating or attributing more funds to tutoring overall?
Mr. Chairman.
At present, so number one, we, we get a pocket of funding from the ministry in our core funding that allows us to use this for and what specifically designed for is equity deserving groups who are with students who are achieving benchmark. So that is one of the priorities that we've provided. I didn't mention in this presentation, but in other presentations I do speak to in elementary, one of the supports we provide for students with autism. We provide funding for students to participate in a coding program. Because we know this, like it's an online tool. And what the data has presented to us is this is a very engaging format for students and there's tremendous outcomes. Just today, we were in a subject council, which is what we do with department heads all come together and speak to us and make decisions about things like exams. We're also presenting to department heads that the ministry continues to provide a free tutoring website and resource that's one-to-one tutoring online called Mathify. So we have advertised that in the past and will continue to promote that for students. They don't need to pay anything. They just need to sign up and all they need is their student number that's on the report card. And we've been facilitating that with department heads and providing them the data that they need in order to make sure that students can access that on a regular basis. And I don't believe there's any limits to participation.
Follow up question, are we seeing an increasing demand for tutoring year over year?
Mr. Chair. I would say that the demand has been there. We continue to have requests from other grades, which we kind of do on a, one to, on a, on kind of offhand basis to take a look at where the student need is. So while we do promote and really focus on grade nine and ten, we do allow for other students to, to be participating in it. But to answer your question directly, I don't have the data to say any more people are coming forward saying we need more extra tutoring. But having said that, there are other areas that we do promote. For example, there's another one that the ministry does provide funding for any elementary school and secondary school. If they want to provide after-school supports for students, there's funding available for schools to do that. So teachers or other adults could get paid to provide that extra support after hours.
Thank you, thank you. Trustee Carabella, your hand is still up there, do you have questions?
Actually, I did have another question. You were mentioning about the the tutoring for equity deserving groups and then I, so what happens if you're not part of that group and you need help?
Okay, so the very first place, I would recommend Mathify. I would recommend after-hours supports, lunch hour supports. But again, we do offer those supports for students on an, on a on indirect basis, basically. If they come and request that I need some extra tutoring, I take a look at the, the whole scenario and take a look. For example, there's a student with medically, medical needs diagnosed with a concussion, wasn't able to participate in school. So we're able to provide some extra supports and tutoring through the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, follow.
Yeah, no, I'm good, thanks.
I see no other hands up, so thank you, Superintendent Skibek and Mrs. Denise Redmire. Thank you so much and team. I know there's a bigger team behind you, working hard and and focused. So thank you and thank you to your team for all the work that you do. And your projected plan for next year, we are hoping to see a growth and results on, we don't see a growth. And I have my own theory about why the Q or results are not on, considering so well, they cross check that. So once again, thank you for all the work that you do. Okay, thank you. With that, with that, we shall move on to our next hour of business is delegations. We have none, consent agenda is next. Following items, can we have the consent agenda up on screen? Following items have been agreed upon, that the agenda is able to stay on the consent agendas. Six point one action items. Six point one point one, six point one point two, six point one point three, six point one point four, six point one point five and six point one point six. The six point one point two is noted items, we shall not be worrying on that. So trustee Saunders, you had the question, six point one point five, you will not get a vote from this time. There will be no discussion, just take it to. Resolved, how it can be this school board, I'll bring a motion. Resolved, how it can be to six school board approve consent agenda items, six point one point one, six point one point two, six point one point three, six point one point four, six point one point five and six point one point six as submitted at the October twenty first, twenty twenty five regular board meeting. May I have a move of this item? Looking for a move of these. Trustee Agnew.
I can second, it's Powell.
Steve Powell seconded. It's seven. I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Linton Adam.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Adelie.
In favor.
Trustee Parson.
In favor.
Trustee Hannah, in favor. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
You have eight in favor, none opposed, no attention, consent agenda carries. So now move on to our next hour of business, number nine, actives. Item nine point one, election of the vice chair of the board. As per our bylaws, three point seven point two, election of the vice chair. The first meeting of the vacancy occurs in the office of vice chair. Trustee, trustee shall elect one of themselves to be vice chair. I will now ask Director Klein to lead us the election of vice chair of the board. Director Klein. Say head of chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. We will now proceed with the election of vice chair of the board for the period October twenty first, two thousand twenty five through to the regular board meeting in November of two thousand twenty five. Should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, student trustees will act as scrutineers while Superintendent Lott and I tabulate ballots. According to our board bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of vice chair of the board must be duly moved and seconded and received by the secretary of the board. As such, I will now ask for nominations to come forward.
That's a nice question. Sorry. Trustee Agnew stands up.
Yes, I go ahead. I'd like to nominate trustee O'Hearn Sharnata for the position of vice chair of the board.
Okay, so nominated by trustee Agnew. And nominating trustee O'Hearn Sharnata, that's our mover is.
I can second him.
Second, I think that was trustee Powell. Does trustee O'Hearn Sharnata accept the nomination for the position of vice chair of the board?
Yes, I do.
Are there any other nominations? Trustee Saunders.
Right, nominee trustee Carabella for the role. And we ask for a clarification. Chair, is it, is it a majority or is it the person who gets the most votes for this vote?
It's a majority. So that's moved by trustee Saunders. And we need a seconder. Well, second, trustee Kennedy. Seconded it. And same question, does trustee Carabella accept the nomination for the position of vice chair of the board?
I do, thank you.
I'll ask if there are any more nominations come forward. Seeing any others. Who will close nominations? So seeing no further nominations, may I request mover and a seconder to close the nominations for the position of vice chair. So we need a motion to close the nominations. Trustee Agnew.
Powell.
And we need, we don't need a seconder for that. Yes, we do need a seconder for that. Trustee Powell.
I will.
Okay, so resolve that nominations be closed, show of hands. Or do we go right through?
On favor.
On favor of the nomination's being closed. Me against?
Mine.
So it's resolved that nominations are now closed. I would like now to give each nominee for vice chair an opportunity. If they wish to say a few words and allow trustees to ask any questions of the candidate prior to the vote. And select those in order of the nominations themselves. So I'll start with trustee O'Hearn Sharnata. Trustee O'Hearn Sharnata, if you wish, you have the opportunity to say a few words. And then there may be some questions.
Thank you, Director Klein. I really don't have much to say. I've been with the most of you for this full term, so I'd really like to leave some time for any as any questions. All I can tell you is I'll use my God given gifts and I'll do the best I can if I am honored to have this position. So really, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I have a question, I'll walk you down, trustee Kennedy.
If you're elected, through you, Mr. Chair, if you're elected as vice chair, I trust you are, will you vote on motions and policies? Motion.
As I always have, yes, I'd place a vote, yeah.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, I'm doing my glasses on, glasses off. But gives the opportunity now for trustee Carabella, trustee Carabella, we'd like to say a few words.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to thank you for your nomination and your confidence in me. I've been here as well a long time, since two thousand and fourteen. I know the procedures and rules, I'm reliable and available. I take my role as a trustee as a privilege and a service to the HCDSB community. And I'd like to take on this role at this time and I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So any questions? Sorry, wrong.
Just saying. Sorry, trustee Kennedy. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Carabella, if you're elected as vice chair, will you commit to voting on motions?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Looking to see if there's any other questions. I see none. All right, so further ado, we will do now is end of ballots. And elections Ontario. Executive Admin System of the Year. Was it potential with that? And then she'll come by and with our secure ballot box. She will, I know, so please fold them in whatever way you want. Put them in and then I'd ask student trustees and superintendent Lott to meet with me in the room longer and we'll have. have. Smooth. That's smooth. All right, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you to the student trustees for your diligence. Thank you, Superintendent Lott as well. Having counted the votes, it's our duty to say that trustee O'Hearn Shonata is declared vice chair of the Hallton Catholic District School Board period of first October twenty twenty one, October twenty one, two thousand twenty five through the regular meeting in November. So we have the motion then to appoint the vice chair. There's a mover and a seconder needed and that is the motion as follows, resolved that Janet O'Hearn Shonata, you appointed as vice chair of the Hallton Catholic District School Board for the period October twenty first, two thousand twenty five through to the regular board meeting in November twenty twenty five. I need a mover.
I can move it.
Trustee Agnew moves it and I need a seconder.
I can second, it's Powell.
It goes trustee Murphy. Madam Vice Chair, do you wish to address the meeting?
Just a few words. Thank you, Director Klein and through you, Chair. I'd like to thank my nominators, trustee Agnew and trustee Powell. I don't usually run off scripted, so I really speak from the heart, so I will do my best with the God given. Will I be perfect? Probably not. Will I ask for forgiveness? Absolutely. But I will continue to learn and grow in the role. So thank you for the support. Thank you, trustee Carabella as well for putting your name in and I look forward to the next month. So.
All right, now we need a motion to destroy the ballots. Oh, sorry. Yes, we have a mover and shaker. Let us, mover and a seconder. Let us do our vote now, do a vote by hand. The resolve that Janet O'Hearn Shonata be appointed as vice chair of Hallton Catholic District School Board from this day until the through the regular board meeting in November of two thousand twenty five was moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Murphy. And all in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Motion to destroy the ballots will now be put forth. That's straightforward. Resolve that the ballots be destroyed. You have, you're going to give them over to
All right. I'll shut up and shut. Okay.
Resolve that the ballots be destroyed. I need a mover. Trustee Murphy, a seconder.
I can say.
Trustee Agnew. All in favor? All opposed? It is carried. And it says here that I call recess to be organized as needed.
No, so we have, we are in position right now, so we don't really need a recess, but congratulations, trustee O'Hearn Shonata for being elected as vice chair and all the movement. So congratulations. Thank you. So now move on to our next action item nine point two, elect respect campaign. This item was shared at the September sixteenth, very very far regular board meeting as a notice of motion in now an action item. This motion was put forth by trustee Agnew and trusted Powell. Trustee Agnew is the lead on this. Can we have the motion up on screen, please? Trustee Agnew, you'd like to recumulation or like amendment?
Yes, so Mr. Chair, I think I, it's been a little bit since I have brought for emotions. Just want to make sure that I be procedurally correct. So I'm happy to read this, but I also did share with my fellow trustees a proposed amendment to this motion that I had sent. So would you like me to read this and then we can bring up the amended version?
Correct.
Yes, okay, just want to make sure. So be it resolved that the board of trustees of the Hallton Catholic District School Board endorse the principles of the elect respect pledge, sign the pledge and commit to treating others in treating others with respect in all spaces, public, private and online, rejecting and calling out harassment, abuse and personal attacks, focusing debate on ideas and policies, not personal attacks, helping build a supportive culture where people of all backgrounds feel safe to run for and hold office, calling on relevant authorities to ensure the protection of elected officials who face abuse or threats and modeling integrity and respect by holding one another to the highest standards of conduct. Be it further resolved that the HCDSB board of trustees encourage all elected officials, organizations and members of the community to join in supporting elect respect campaign and sign the pledge at www-electrespect.ca.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. You have an amendment. You just shared trustees. Can we see the amendment? Can my list on from this? Thank you. Trustee, is this your amendment?
Actually, there's, sorry, there's a part there at the bottom where I'd like to strike out. And sorry, Rose, maybe I didn't send the next one, but the top part is correct. The bottom part is I'm striking out the sign the pledge. So it would just be supporting the elect respect campaign. Thank you so much. Yes, that looks in order, Mr. Chair.
And the last website is right on.
No, we can leave that there for, if people want to support it, just that there's information there so they know where to find the information.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustees, we have the amended version of the motion on the screen. You brought it forward, you're the mover. I'd like to know if trustee Powell is the seconder or any of the trustees would like to second it.
No, a second, I.
Thank you, trustee Powell.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. This is in order, so trustee Agnew, you get to speak for five minutes, but give me a second. Okay, you get to speak to the motion. The time starts now.
You started when I get my notes up. All right, you good?
Good, all right.
Thank you so much to you, Mr. Chair, and to my fellow trustees. I'm honored to bring forward this motion for the Hallton Catholic District School Board to endorse the principles of the elect respect pledge. This motion is about fostering a culture of respect, integrity and safety in all aspects of our governance and setting a positive example for our community. This is not about, this is not about politics or partisan partisanship. It's about values that we all share, respect, empathy and inclusion. It's about creating an environment where everyone feels safe to participate, contribute and thrive. We know that democracy is healthiest when everyone can participate fully and safely, contributing to the well being of their community. Unfortunately, we are seeing troubling trends that threaten this ideal. Across all levels of government, there has been a decline in respectful discourse and an increase in hostility. Here in Ontario, many municipally elected officials are facing unsafe work environments, including harassment and threats. Social media has amplified this negativity, creating toxic workspaces that discourage individuals, especially women and candidates from diverse backgrounds, from running for office. The Association of Municipalities Ontario's Healthy Democracy Project has highlighted these challenges, including fewer people voting in local elections and fewer individuals stepping forward to run for municipal office. These trends are concerning and they call for action. In response, female elected representatives Halton came together in two thousand and twenty four to form her, Hallton Elected Representatives. This group pledged to speak out against harassment and negativity in politics and launched the elect respect campaign to promote healthy democracy and safe, inclusive and respectful work environments for all elected officials. This campaign has inspired broader initiatives, including the Canadian Association of Feminist Parliamentarians. Launched earlier this year, the efforts show that change is possible when we come together to promote respect and integrity. As a Catholic school board, we are called to model respect, empathy and integrity in all that we do. These values are at the heart of the elect respect pledge. By endorsing these principles, we demonstrate our commitment to fostering a culture of respect and inclusion, not just within our board but throughout our community. This motion directly supports our students when they see their leaders modeling respectful behavior, rejecting harassment and promoting inclusivity. It reinforces these values in their own lives. A culture of respect within government contributes to a safer, more supportive community for students and families. This motion aligns with our key priorities for MYSP, achieving by fostering respectful and inclusive environments. We create conditions for all students to achieve their full potential belonging. The pledge aligns with our goal of creating welcoming environments where everyone feels valued and respected. Foundation elements, the MYSP emphasizes leadership rooted into integrity, accountability and collaboration. Better decisions are made when democracy is respectable and constructive. So once again, I want to emphasize this motion is not about politics or partisanship. It's about values that we should all share. It's about creating a culture where everyone feels safe to contribute and where diverse voices are welcomed and celebrated. By supporting this motion, we're taking a stand against harassment and negativity in public life. We're showing our students, staff and committee that respect and integrity are the foundation of good governance. This is an opportunity for us to lead by example and to contribute to a healthier, more inclusive democracy. I would like to encourage you to support this motion and join me in promoting the values that make our community stronger.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. So trustees, we know when we have action edits like this, we have question time, debate time and then closing. So we shall now open up question time, trustees. Please put your hand up, raise your hand if you are not able to not have access. So it's three minutes for questions. We'll take questions. I'll pass it back to trustee Agnew if she would like to respond. Trustee doesn't have to respond to the questions and then we will then proceed to debate for three minutes, okay? Please raise your hand if you have questions. At this point in time, we will not take any amendments. So the question, so. Trustees, please raise your hands if you have questions. Say now?
Yeah.
Trustee Carabella, your hand.
Does it show?
For my. The links were. Trustee Carabella, you have a hand up, you have a flow, your three minutes starts now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions. I'm wondering, let's say, first of all, I'm noticing that it's regarding the board of let's say, first of all, I'm noticing that it's regarding the Board of Trustees. So that's us nine elected around the table. And exactly how do you want us to encourage, like it says here, going to encourage all elected officials, organizations and members of the community? So how, how do you envision that? What are the expectations?
Yes, so, so trusted Carabella, I think, you know, not in any formalized capacity. I think the idea is just to be informed about what this particular pledge involves, what the basic principles of it are. And then just in, you know, regular conversation, we speak with members of our co-terminus board quite often. Or we speak with other trustees at places like OECTA. We often have, you know, reasons to interact with our M P Ps and our MPs. And so just if you're in a position where you're able to, you know, to talk about this pledge, the principles behind it and encourage someone to take a look at it and, you know, see if there's something they would be interested in doing, that's the intent behind that.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Okay, so and then would there, are, is this going to involve the board resources at all? Is there any cost to board resources or any using the board logo? Because that I would not agree with. No.
Trustee.
It would not at all. Trustee Carabella, it's a great question. It would not at all.
Also, I was going to ask about, this is like the third party sort of group. It is political just in that it involves all political candidates and, and elected officials. So it is political. And it is following these principles. How do we know that those principles might not change or get added something else on after it gets approved or gets voted in?
Trustee Agnew.
I don't know that.
Trustee Carabella.
Has anyone looked into seeing what the O C S T A's opinion is on this by, by promoting a political campaign? Elect Respect?
So again, I will comment that I, you know, I think will differ in whether or not we build a political campaign. So no, I did have an opportunity to speak with our Office Director. My hope and intent was that if this does pass here, I would like to bring this to OXTA for their consideration. I believe that that would be a great opportunity for a number of our trustees across the province to also take a look at supporting this initiative. So, you know, I didn't want to put the current before the course, if you will. I will comment that our co-terminus board did pass this unanimity as well as a number of other councils and municipalities without concern. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
I have still some minutes. Okay. So this part about calling on relevant authorities to ensure the protection of elected officials. I'm not understanding, we already have avenues to, to, you know, if something is being harassed or abused or threatened. There's already ways that that is addressed. So I'm not understanding how we as Board of Trustees would call on an authority. So could you explain that?
So we as a, thank you, sir, Mr. Chair. So we as a trust, so we as a group of trustees would not call on the authorities. We're standing behind the, the need for authorities to respond in appropriate ways. I will tell you that there have been elected officials who have been harassed and threatened. They've been threatened with bodily harm and even death. And there, the response, the response from some of the, from some of the, I'm trying to be careful, from some of the entities that may be there to protect those elected officials. There's a lot of uncertainty around how that is done. There's a lot of gray areas. So we often find that elected officials don't fall in the same category with respect to some of those protections as other individuals do. Because we're in an elected position, there are certain things that don't hold the same weight for us as they would for a member of the regular community who is not an elected official. So what we're saying is, is that all elected officials deserve the right to be protected if they are enduring harassment, whether that be online or in person or other mechanisms. And that we're calling on the authorities to make sure that those mechanisms are in place for protection.
Trustee Carabella, you still have time?
Okay. I guess there's, as being in a, in a, an elected official, you are opening up yourself to criticism that's possible, right? I'm not in agreement with harassment, of course, but healthy criticism or a chance for the public to be able to express their opinion in a safe way is important. Yeah, I'm just, you know, I, I'm having difficulty or can you explain why? So because in your first speech, here in the board, in this motion, it says that the Board of Trustees of Hallton Catholic. I think in your opening line of your speech, trustee Agnew, you mentioned like the Hallton Board. So I find that's two different focuses. One is the Board of Trustees, the nine of us around the table. And the other one that you spoke about, if I understood correctly, you said the Hallton Catholic District School Board itself.
So I missed a word there. Trustee Carabella, the intent would be trustees. I'm happy to rephrase that. You know, very familiar over, yeah, over the number of years, the difference between our, you know, the Board of Trustees, separate entity from the Hallton Catholic District School Board. So that would have just been an error of my part in not adding that word in there, trustee Carabella. So thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Your time is up. The number one trustee, Vice Chair, John O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Consigliere, thank you for bringing this forth for our consideration. And I appreciate the fact you're bringing it forward, showing us the avenues if we wish to support, to go where to go and how to support it. I signed my name to it months and months and months ago. Just to say it's not okay. I just, for the, for the good of all of us, to bring it back to, we have student trustees that are sitting on the table. There's a wonderful student trustee sitting right beside me and we have student senate. So if you could just maybe bring it back to the student success part as far as an overarching governance of this, this support.
Sure. Thank you for the question. I mean, I touched on it briefly, but I was trying to be cognizant of my five minutes. But, you know, I think it's important that we demonstrate, we have student trustees around the table. We may at one point decide that they'd like to move into some sort of, you know, formalized political career. We have trust, we have students across our system who, who do a lot of study when civics and careers, they have conversations about what's involved with civics. We see in our elementary system where around election time, there's a lot of conversation about what's going on with the election process. And I think it's an opportunity for us to just define for our students that, you know, these unwanted behaviors, these, some of the things that have come forward to bring this pledge forward are not okay. We don't stand for those. We want to support civility. We want to support respectful democracy. We want to support, no one should be harassed. You know, trustee Carabella, I mentioned opinions, opinions, absolutely, nobody has to agree with. But nobody should be harassed. No one should be threatened. So I want our students to understand. I think by us supporting this and showing that these are the, these are the things, the values that we support, I hope it's a great example for them as well, that we as a Board of Trustees uphold the principles of this pledge. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. Thank you, trustee Agnew.
What questions, question?
I do, and we spoke, we spoke, we spoke about OXTA earlier and then we can go a couple avenues there. We can go to the large regional board committee and bring it up there if we wish. We can as a board, if we want to put it through as a resolution, it's there as well to speak to the whole Ontario OXTA, which are all elected officials. So we have avenues for that as well moving forward. So that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, you have three minutes for questions.
Thank you very much. So through you, Mr. Chair. So I've been just sort of looking into Elect Respect, trying to understand it. I mean, there are many laudable principles. I've read the website, also called my town council, I believe is involved. But in my research, I'm also finding sort of dissenting opinions. I mean, I've got some articles here and they're quite inflammatory, but I just, I won't go into it, I'll just say, but it says, "Leprechaun Pledge, Resolution cloaked in virtue, but aimed squarely at chilling public discourse and suppressing dissent." And another one, it says, "To be clear, the resolution is not about protecting staff from violence or credible threat. It is about shielding politicians from..."
Can I? This is question time.
No, I know, I know, but I'm just saying to, I just want to say to trustee. So are you aware that there seems to be a divergence? There doesn't seem to be a consistency in how people are, are viewing this. And it's, it's, I'm sort of on my journey and I'm not really sure how I feel about this. So I just wanted, if you could speak to some of these concerns that are being outlined. What's your understanding of them and why, why are people interpreting it this way?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. I actually cannot, sorry, here you, Mr. Chair. I don't know the sources. I haven't seen what you're referencing. You have a copy of them, trustee Saunders, which is great. I'm so happy you've done your research. You looked into this. I think we should all be fully informed of motions coming to the table. I have not seen those, so I don't know with what you're referencing. I don't know, again, the credibility of the source. I don't know where they're coming from. I don't know who they've been written by. There's always going to be opinions on other side of this, I can tell you. As someone who's been involved with this, I've seen the dialogue, I've seen the stories that have been shared. If you look at the website, you'll see some of that. There's always going to be people that are going to disagree with something. So, you know, again, not having seen your, I can tell you, you know, when I look at the number of people who have supported this, it recently passed at Toronto Council. We have a hundred and seventy two elected officials across Canada who have signed this. We have twenty nine municipalities and growing. It's coming to Halton Hills and Milton next week. We've had six boards that have signed this and three hundred and eighty six citizens. So there are people, again, from both parties, multiple different positions who have signed this. So I can't speak to those who have not supported trustee Saunders. I can only speak on behalf of someone who does support the pledge.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do you think it would be beneficial for us to maybe have, rather than a vote on it tonight, maybe have a little bit more information on this? Maybe have someone come in to speak to us about it? Give us sort of a, you know, a detailed idea of the genesis, you know, where it's going. And I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial if had someone come in and talk to us about, about this Elect Respect Pledge and sort of give us a little bit more context. Because right now, you know, I'm not sure where I stand because I'm reading different opinions.
Trustee Saunders, the way it works is trustees bring a motion forward. In this particular case, it was a notice of motion a month back. Trustees have had enough time to have, to do their research. And trustee Agnew has provided the notes. As, as board's concerned, as we are meeting now, they, we have to make a decision on the motion. We cannot, you know, unless trustee Agnew and all the trustees agree. And then we speak to bring someone, but I don't see that situation right now.
I was just asking a question.
She, she is free to answer whatever she wants. As a board of trustees, they don't make a decision on the motion. So trustee Agnew, would you like to?
I don't want to speak on behalf of, I have the motion for it. I believe that it provided the explanatory notes on it. I think we have to, we have to determine here whether or not we as elected officials should be respected. And, you know, if we should be subjected to harassment and violence. So I don't, you know, I can't, from my perspective, trustee Saunders, I feel that I brought it forward. I brought explanatory notes. I provided the information for anyone to do their own research, take a look at it. If it's the will of the trustees to delay this and bring someone to speak to it, I think that's up to my fellow trustees.
I think this Saunders still have time. Good luck. Yep, I'm good. Thanks. Thank you. Up next is trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, and through you, Chair. So thank you for making this motion forward. I just, I think you already mentioned it, but I was going to ask how many specific people, like elected officials, have been in support of like a motion like this?
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm happy to, you know, just expand a little bit. There is a sign of all the signatories on the page, trustee Kelly. So thank you for the question. But there, like I said, there is, at current, there's a hundred and seventy two elected officials from across Canada who have signed it. That's a composition of mayors, councillors, MPs, trustees, a number of different officials from a number of different municipalities. It just recently passed at Toronto Council last week. And it, like I said, it is coming to Halton Hills and Milton next week. So, you know, for something that's just been newly launched, I think there has been a lot of support for it. But those are the numbers, as I know them to date. And like I said, please, I would encourage anyone to take a look if you'd like to see more information on the signatories. But I hope that answers your questions as far as the information I have are readily available at this point with who has supported it.
Trustee Kelly.
Yeah, thank you so much. And with these specific boards and groups that have already passed it, like it was pretty much positive feedback from the public or was it negative? Just like, do you know or have any information on that?
I don't have, I, sorry, thank you, three, Mr. Chair. I don't have that. I know that the boards, the boards that I know who have passed it, the municipalities I know have passed it, have passed it unanimously. I, I haven't seen anything negative, negative coming out of those. I would assume if they passed that they were positive resolutions that those councils and boards were supporting.
Thank you, trustee Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, I see your hand up. You have the floor. Three minutes for questions.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chair. Just wondering how the pledge, the need to stop negative attacks or officials, do they have kind of a plan in place or anything about that? That's how the goal we achieved.
Yes, thank you. So I think the idea, and it's evolving. Trustee Kennedy, there's always work that's going into this and there's continual conversations. But I think the idea behind it is that once you sign this pledge, we, it's, it's, the more people who make it, the more people who support this, the more people who are saying, I don't stand for this type of harassing behavior. I myself, I'm not going to subscribe to it. I'm going to make sure that I stand up for those who are being harassed. So I think, like anything else, I believe it's just going to be through that positive reinforcement and through people supporting this, that's going to hopefully eliminate some of those behaviors. And I think for people who are entering into politics, if they see that these are the types of things that are in place, we're seeing elected officials, we're seeing candidates start to sign these, that they might feel more confident that stepping forward into an arena, they'll have people that will be against these types of behaviors.
Do we, Mr. Chair, do you know if there are any programs, seminars that the board or trustees could attend or they're offering? You already said no cost, but any time commitment from the board other than?
There's no cost whatsoever. We would essentially, and we're in, you'll see trustee Kennedy that I actually removed the signatory piece. So we actually won't be signing our names to it. It's just us saying that we support the principles of this pledge as a Board of Trustees. So that's it. Like it ends there.
Trustee.
Do we, do we know if this group, is it a charity or is it a nonprofit?
No, there's, there's no, it's not registered for, there's no money being collected. There's no.
Do we know how they're funded?
I don't know that there's no, I don't know. Sorry, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know that, trustee Kennedy. Sorry.
Trustee Kennedy. Just give me a, you, Mr. Chair, I don't turn this on already.
You, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good.
Do we know of any other, any, so we've had a couple boards in Ontario, it sounds like. Do we know of any Catholic boards have endorsed the pledge so far?
Trustee Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So not that I've seen, I was waiting for updated information before this. That was, again, my conversation with our Office Director about bringing it forward. Because this has grown out of Halton and it's grown from there. And like I said, the co-terminus board has signed unanimously. I think a lot of it is driving out of Halton and then going outwards. So at this point, I'm not sure, trustee Kennedy, if other Catholic boards have signed on at this point.
Trustee Kelly.
Yeah, thank you. So we say we have some trustees here that have signed the pledge. Just wondering, just maybe out there, are any trustees in any decision-making capacity for this group in any way? Or affiliated in any way with that group?
Trustee Agnew.
No, I signed on as someone who just supports the pledge. And someone who, you know, there was, again, being a member of her, any, any female elected representative in Halton is encouraged to participate in the HER group. Everyone is invited, everybody from M P Ps to trustees, to MPs, to councillors. And it's, it was born out of there. So I've signed this as simply as someone who's been part of these conversations and supported this initiative that's come forward.
Trustee Agnew. Chair, do we know if there is, if there's any more principles that are added in the future by the trustees or this board approves the pledge, would those automatically be added? Or we have to vote again on any new principles that are, that are added?
Trustee Agnew.
I don't know. I don't, again, they say never assume. I don't anticipate. There's a lot of work that has gone into establishing these particular principles for a reason. I don't see that all of a sudden someone is going to say, let's add. I can't answer that for you definitively, trustee Kennedy. But in the event, I will monitor this. In the event that it does come up, I'd be happy to come back and do an amended resolution or advise the board that something else has changed.
Trustee Kennedy.
Through you, Mr. Chair. You've already been checking OXTA. We're not sure if they've endorsed it, but we're going to find out or check with them. Just as far as enforcement goes, do you, do you feel like this aligns in any way with our code of conduct? Like if the, the board passes it, would it be part of that? And who would enforce kind of this, these principles?
Trustee Agnew.
So I don't, I see this as being complimentary to our code of conduct. That's obviously something that we commit to, something we're held to, something that is there in the event, you know, you hope that you adhere to the code of conduct. In the event that you don't, it is a mechanism, you know, to hold a trustee responsible for their behaviors. I see this as running parallel to that. It don't, this is not replacing it. This is not, this is just as an elected official, separate from our code of conduct, separate from everything else. We are saying as an elected official that we support these principles as outlined in this pledge.
Trustee Kennedy.
There you go, Mr. Chair. Just, just lastly, a couple things. There you go, Mr. Chair. Just, just lastly, a couple of things. Do we know if the Minister of Education or the ministry have endorsed the group at all? I, I looked at this, we signed the pledge, I didn't see anything but the ministers specifically, but do we know if the, the ministry itself has endorsed, I mean, any comments at all on the group?
Trustee Agnew?
So I don't know that it has been brought directly to the Ministry of Education. I can say anecdotally, based on the things that Mr. Calandra is looking at from some of the board behaviors, this is something that would reinforce, I think, the stability and some of the positive behaviors that he's looking for from elected officials, specifically trustees. We have had MPs and MPPs involved with this. I just can't comment if someone has brought this directly to the Ministry of Education. Again, it's been fairly newly launched. I would not be in a position to bring that forward, and I'm not sure if anyone has. But we have had other people in provincial that have signed it.
Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you, that's it.
A point of privilege. Can I go on the list of?
Mr. Chair, sure. Hold on, you define this. Okay, trustee Murphy, we do three minutes of questions and three minutes of debates. So we are.
Starting when?
Starting now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew. You know, in the news, we see that, you know, not to be overly dramatic, it seems to be open season on, on politicians and, you know, especially with our friends south of the border, there's a lot of violence. Some of us who were around the state during COVID experienced that threats or, you know, even I was sued by the Emperor of Canada at the World War in the Hague. So we know it exists, you know, the, the impact of social media, that anonymity gives people power and they're striking out at elected officials. They think if, if you put your name in the hat, you're open game, right? It's open season on you. And I think some of the points you made, which, which resonate with me is that, you know, sometimes there's time, it's time for us to speak and sometimes it's a time for us to listen. So, and if we have elected officials, female elected officials, who are saying they don't feel safe, I think that's something that's important for us to pay attention to and to see what we can do to make it better, right? So I think this resolution is, is our small part in, in being supportive, which I think is important. As a, as a member of the board of trustees, my concern is always.
Can I interrupt your question?
Right, I was just about to start my question. It was right there. You stole my thunder, but that's okay. You're from Milton, I'll, I'll excuse you. So my question, as a, as a member of the board of trustees, I'm always worried about reputational risk. So I would like to verify that we are not giving authority for this third-party organization to promote or use our name in any way, shape or form. That's question mark.
Trustee Agnew?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. So by eliminating the signing piece, the signatory piece, then that doesn't become part of the website. It doesn't become part of, so we're not officially signing the pledge. So that, that would, that would, I think, then remove us from being listed as official signatories or official supporters of this particular. So we will, I mean, I can't stop it from hitting the news in a positive way, I think, if this resolution passed. But as far as this particular group, I, because we're not signing it, it won't be part of the official signatory. Does that make sense? Sorry, it's a way of going around. Did that make sense, trustee Murphy?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Trustee Murphy, you still have time.
I would gladly donate my man to somebody else, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, I see no other trustees hand up. So that's the last chance, if you have questions, question time. Now, I shall.
It's a question procedure for Chair. If someone wanted to make a motion to amend.
So that's coming up in debate time.
The question I have is, is that before debate time or after debate time? That's all it's?
No, during debate time. When I open up debate time, put your hands up.
Okay.
If you want to make an amendment, so we'll take it from there and start the whole process again.
Thank you.
So with that, I shall now open up debate time. So three-minute debate time. This is a process opportunity to make amendments if you want, and then we'll start our process again. Okay? So trustee Sanders, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Three minutes for debate.
I have an amendment. I provided to Rosie. Okay. If I was over there, give me a second. Rosie, can you put it up there?
So trustee Sanders, the motion is up there, the original motion and your amendment. Can I see the amendment in highlighted? Please, please select the. Okay. Okay, so trustees, you see the motion in front of us? The original motion is back. And the highlighted item is what trustee Sanders is proposing. Trustee Sanders, is this accurate?
I believe so, yeah. The elected officials, any of you to join and support, supporting these principles. Yes, I think so. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's it. Makes sense.
So you want to strike out elect respect pledge, want to insert following policy adopted in the teaching of church?
Yes.
And, uh, and the word principles. And that correct?
Yes, yes.
So trustees, we have an amendment which is moved by trustee Sanders. So Sanders, I see, I have a little, um, I see an item here which concerns me. So you are striking out the elect respect pledge. That's right. And that is what the original motion is about.
Yes.
Okay, so the way we work on amendments is we cannot change the essence of amendment.
So my argument is that this doesn't, if, if, if you allow me to say, I'll figure out this doesn't change the.
But what I meant to say, and I'll give you a simple example on a motion. If you have a, a motion to paint a house red, you cannot amend, demolish the house. So it's two different, as an example, simple example. So the essence of the motion as presented is the elect respect pledge. It's there. I'm okay with the second part. This is okay. It's an order, the following policy, regardless of small policy, anyway. So I have a, I cannot understand how that does not change the motion. It does change the motion.
If, if, if you're okay with me making the presentation, and then I guess the trustees can vote on it.
No, doesn't look that way. So basically changing the essence of the, of the entire motion by striking that.
Well, I think the essence is the, the verbiage here about the principles. I think that's what it's really about, some of the principles. It's about, I believe, trustee Agnew said, we're trying to create an environment, endorse the principles, and ensure there's non-partisanship. So I think, I think that's the important aspect. It is not this, the, the name of the group. I don't think that fundamentally changes where we're going.
To start with, the elect respect pledge, I'm not sure that's a group. My, my analysis is, it's a pledge. So that says, correct me, trustee Agnew, if I'm right, wrong, that's the essence. So I'm, I'm not okay with the first words, but I'm okay with the rest of it. And that's how motions work. You cannot take a motion and change to something else.
And may I appeal your decision?
Okay. So if you feel the decision, I need a second. So trustee Kennedy, a second. Okay. Trustee Sanders, you have one minute to speak to why the, my motion is not in.
So I think the, you know, these are, these are very laudable principles. And I think that the, the principles are what's important, and the one that sort of grounds into the Catholic faith. I think that's really what we're headed for. It's the, the elect respect pledge, or, you know, it's also a group or, or whatever we would call it. I think it introduces a little bit of partisanship or potential partisanship. So I think that if we focus on, you know, the, the, the issues, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, I, I think that's the important part. I don't think the, this elect respect pledge really changes anything that we're trying to do. And, and I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really sure why that would be important. I mean, we're, we're trying to do something. This is, like, I'll call it a group or, or a movement or something, but I don't think that needs to be there for us to still adhere to these, these principles. So I think that's why I'd like to feel your decision.
Thank you. So trustee, we are talking about addition of the first word elect respect pledge. And to my understanding, as, as Chair and after my research, that's the essence of it. So, so you have appealed my decision. It has been moved by trustee Paravella. Uh, it has been appealed by trustee Sanders. Seconded by trustee Caravella. You had a time to speak to that. That's my time to speak to it. I spoke and I said that that's the essence of the motion. And I see it and I read it in a, in a neutral lens, and changing, that changes the essence of the motion. So I ruled this, those words out of order, but the others are okay to keep. With that, I shall take, take it to a recorded vote. And it's an appeal. So if you were in favor, you're in favor of trustee Sanders. If you're opposed, then you are opposed, uh, in the amendments.
If you're in favor, are you more in favor of trustee presenting the motion?
No, then we continue with, if, if the motion carries, all trustees are in favor of keeping the words elect respect pledge in the motion, then continue with moving and seconding and we continue the process.
We're voting on his appeal first.
Voting on the appeal first. And you're voting on the appeal of those words, those four words, the elect respect pledge.
I thought the appeal was for trustee Saunders was just to present why.
No, no, no. They're voting on the words elect respect pledge, those words, because.
A point of order, Mr. Chair? We, we should be voting on the procedural validity of making a fundamental change, not the content of what the change is. So that's what we're voting. Should we, Chair, can you clarify that?
So, trustee, the motion as I stated, is asking for, or, uh, uh, has got, it's a defined motion. By removing the words elect respect pledge, you're changing the essence of the motion. Because that's what the motion is about. Okay? So, so to us, trustees, decide on the motion and amendments. But in this particular case, if you delete the word elect respect pledge in the motion, that changes it.
That's right, point of approach. May I just ask, so. I guess point of.
Clarification.
Yeah, clarification, parent. So we're going to vote on this part, and then if it's accepted or not, then we return back to my main.
Correct. We are voting on retaining the word elect respect pledge. So trustees.
So voting the appeal.
The procedural piece. I think we're voting on, sorry, Mr. Chair, to trustee, I think we're voting on the procedural piece. Like whether this, this is in order or not, is the piece, so regardless of the words, they frame, they frame why, but we're voting about whether or not this is procedurally.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you, darling. So, so we are going to be voting now, again, on retaining the words elect.
The challenge, there was a challenge to your ruling that, that this was out of order.
Right.
So what we're voting on, is this in order?
Exactly.
On the content of what is being discussed.
So there, there's, it was moved by trustee Sanders, and the appeal was moved by trustee Sanders, seconded by trustee Caravella. Now we're going to vote if the appeal was in order or not.
So if we vote in favor or in favor of the appeal?
In favor of trustee Sanders. If you agree with trustee Sanders, you're in favor.
Right.
In favor of the appeal only, not the content.
Correct.
So we are on the same page. So if you say yes, you agree with trustee Sanders on the appeal.
If you're saying yes, this is in order.
Right.
This change was in order, then you vote on the content.
Okay. Don't agree with trustee Sanders, it's a no. Online, is it clear? I'm sorry. Online, trustee Paulies, you understood?
Yeah, I think by the fourth time I got it. It is confusing though.
It is confusing because we're not done this in a very long time. Okay? With that, I shall call the, plus so you're spoken to that, as spoken with. There's no further discussion. We'll call it, call it a rule. Trustee Agnew, what do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Popehan Chanara, how do you vote?
No, opposed.
Trustee Kelly, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Sanders, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Adelie?
In favor.
Trustee Peresram?
In favor.
Trustee Hannah?
In favor.
Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Trustee Hull?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
So we have three in favor. Uh, I'm going to vote opposed. If three in favor, if six opposed, so your appeal fails. Okay, so now we are going to continue with the motion. Okay. And my ruling was the elect respects that word over there is not appropriate. Okay, so I'm going to give an opportunity now, trustee Sanders, to work on this motion and bring it back to the trustees.
Mr. Chair, just a point of privilege. Um, there's a spelling error. It's instead of tenants, which I believe is what you prefer, it's tenants, which is people who occupy property. So.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's, that was, I didn't call them. That's, that's fixed there. That's fixed there.
It is what's out there, I think, in the.
Thanks, that's fixed as well, that one.
So it should be tenants. Tenants.
Okay, so trustee Sanders.
Yeah.
Uh, that's just look at her now. Uh, oh, Christ, and that is, that is correct. Thank you.
So you speak to this now?
Yes.
So give me, give me one second.
Yeah, fine. But you have the floor, you have five minutes to speak to trustee Sanders.
Okay, so I, like I said, I think these are laudable principles. I think what we can add at the Hall Catholic History School Board is this, this other, you know, you know, information or, or at least principle, that, you know, whatever we do should always be following the principles of the teaching of Christ and guided by the tenets of the Catholic Church. So I put this in, as, it's, it's another positive principle. I think it enhances the principles we have, and I think it distinguishes us as a Catholic school. So I'd ask for your support. I think it's, I think it's important. I think it's something we need to be reminded that, you know, this is really what we're here about. And I would appreciate your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sanders. I shall now open up question time, trustees. We have three minutes. Trustee, you can ask questions on trustee Sanders. If trustee Sanders like respond good, it's fine. If not, I'll try my best to transmit questions. So trustees, do we have questions for trustee Sanders? Do you know, trustee Kennedy, you have three minutes for questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So trustee Sanders, so would, would you basically mean what you're saying here more of the, you know, Jesus' second command, love your neighbors, you love yourself? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think this, that's really important. You know, the, you know, the teachings of, of Christ. You know, love your neighbor, love your, you know, love yourself, love your neighbor, and guided by the tenets of the Church. So I think that, I think that's really important for us, and it helps us remind us what we're doing, what we're doing here, what's really important. Like I said, these other, these other principles are very laudable, right? You know, some really good stuff here. But I think, like I said, this will distinguish us, and perhaps this will be the, the wording that'll go forward to the other, the other seven school boards or Catholic school. I mean, this is what will kick them into their. their agreement. So I'm hoping that this is the beginning of maybe something.
Trustee Henry? Any other trustees have questions for trustee Saunders? Trustee, trustee Hannah?
Um, sorry, so just the way that the last sentence is formatted, would it, because it just says these principles period and then it says elect respect campaign. I think that's a bit strange, like what on the elect respect campaign, would that be changed then?
Only these principles. Uh, that was originally when we got the elect respect, so we'd have to, we're not able to say organizing and and members of the community to join supporting, I guess the ruling was we would keep the word elect respect and.
Uh, no, you know, this is an amendment. It's, we can.
Well, you know, I like the word these principles because these are principles and this is another principle. So I I do like that way. So these principles are the principles above.
Okay, thank you. Uh, trustee, Hannah, you have more questions. Thank you. Any other trustees have, trustee O'Han Chenara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, trustee Saunders, I understand what you're trying to do with the amendment. I I truly do. I just think we're getting, my personal opinion, we're getting a little lost in ourselves. This is just information brought to us that there's a website if you want to sign it to say it's not okay and to encourage us. I don't I don't need a line that says follow the tenants of the Catholic Church. I'm a Catholic. I follow the tenants of the church. So to put that in writing, I think is redundant. And, you know, the elect respect campaign is for both four bullet points that are below. So I I want to leave it the way it's been presented, but I do understand what you're trying to do there, trustee Saunders.
I don't like, I didn't get a question.
Yeah, I hear questions.
Question then.
Pardon?
No.
So I'm just asking why you think we need, okay, so I'll ask a question. So trustee Saunders, why do you think we need a reminder of the sentence to follow the tenants of our Catholic Church at a Catholic school board?
Thank you.
Because I I think that, you know, like like it's been the word was, it's it's a broad based group movement. And, you know, there are secular, there, at this point, apparently no Catholic schools have signed on. So I think this is important for us to bring this forward to say, you know what, these are good things. Here's something else that's good and here's what distinguishes us and here's, you know, what we would like to add to this. So I don't think we're diminishing it. I think we're adding to it. And I think it's specific for our, for our. That's, that's why, thank you very much for your question. That's, that's why I wanted to.
Let's do a mention of remote questions.
Just, just, you know, to add to that, and we have policies in here that are guided by our tenets of faith, we have our principles, our policies, because the word policy is mentioned in here. And I mean, if people don't agree with it, don't sign it. So that's it.
Thank you. Uh, any other trustees have questions for trustee Saunders? You have spoken.
Oh, sorry. Did you say questions are to be, is there to be time?
Obviously.
Oh, so then I already.
The motions now. Seeing none, trustees, I shall now open up debate time. Uh, you have three minutes for debate. Uh, trustees, please raise your hand. We are debating on the amendment, voted by trustee Saunders, seconded by trustee Carabella. Trustee Kennedy, minutes.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think this, this is reasonable amendment to put in. I mean, we had a policy meeting last week regarding public concerns and complaints resolution process. I could see this falling under some of these principles. And the very first principle in our policy was that the HCSB is inclusive and ethical model learning community widely recognized as distinctively Catholic, providing exceptional education over nurturing the cult above and service people of faith living out God's plan. So we've done this many times before in many of our motions and policies. And I think this line actually helps us continue that 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 trend and recognizes our board as distinctively Catholic. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Any other trustees would like to debate on trustee Saunders amendment? No? Thank you. Uh, with that, I shall close the debate and trustee Saunders, you have three minutes to.
Okay, thank you very much. But give me a second. Okay, so, oh, yeah, so as I said, I think what this does is it makes it a little easier for for us as a Catholic board to accept this. I think it doesn't diminish. I think it enhances. It clearly tells everyone who we are and it makes it a little easier for us. So I I think it's it's a, it's a positive step. I think it's it's something that like I said, I hope it's something that we move forward on. Other school boards can can use this as their mark. So thank you very much. I would appreciate your support. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. With that, I shall call the vote on the amendment that you see, amendment to the original motion. Trustee O'Han, sorry, vice chair O'Han Chenara.
In the post.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Supposed.
Trustee Adelie?
In favor.
Trustee Peresram?
Opposed.
Trustee Hannah? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Paul?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
Ares.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
So we have three in favor, five opposed, motion fails, the amendment fails. And so come back to the original motion. Can you have your original motion back on screen, please? So back to the original motion, uh, trustees have spoken. Uh, question time was open. It was question time. Uh, we started debate time. Trustee Saunders was the first person to debate the new amendment, which lost, so we're back to debate time there. So trustees, debate time on the original motion. Would like to debate on the original motion. You have three minutes. Trustee Hannah?
Yeah. A three, Mr. Chair. I would like to be, I think I am in favor of this motion. I do think that this is. Sorry.
So so I didn't hear what he said.
Sorry, uh, should I restart or?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so I do believe that this motion is beneficial. I would have preferred if there was, um, you know, a a bullet point on Catholicism in there, but I I think you can very much view it as redundant and I'm being very semantic there. Um, I think the principles of the motion are very, you know, worldly. I think I think everyone can hear that in terms of pure ethics, this is a commendable motion. Uh, the organization behind it, I've heard that that was a concern, but it seems to be widely nonpartisan. The biggest concern I had was like a person on the internet, which while their concern is very much valid, the very much the organization is nonpartisan and doesn't seem like it will become partisan in the future, at least not in the near future. So in terms of just endorsing these principles, as of right now, I'd definitely be in favor.
Trustee, any other trustees would like to debate? Oh, sorry, trustee Cannon. Trustee Carabella?
So sorry, so this is, sorry.
So we are debating the debate time, three minutes on the original motion.
Okay.
You'd like to vote?
Okay, sure. Okay, so, um, thank you for bringing this to our attention. So we can model and it's and expect respectful and inclusive behavior. I believe we do already without the elect respect campaign, signing it as a board of trustees. Um, are pledging ourselves with it. We, of course, we are against harassment and abuse at home Catholic everywhere in our society. And it is who we are. It's our governing values, our code of conduct. It's our mission statement. It's our strategic plan. So I will not be supporting this motion as a board of trustees because it is linked to political campaign. Even though you say it's nonpartisan or it it still is, it's 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 a political campaign, a group of politicians together um, doing something noble, but um, I think it can be a personal, like I I have a problem with it bringing it as a board of trustees. It's nine of us sitting around the table. If an individual trustee wishes to promote it and sign the pledge, they're free to do so. And I can do that too. I can promote that, but I don't need to have this motion for that. Uh, however, bringing this to the board of trustees and making it binding on all trustees only can be achieved if it's unanimous. Uh, if not, and if it passes by majority vote, it would be against the freedom of conscience of an individual trustee. Um, I represent the voice of my constituents, parents and rate payers. And you know what they've been telling me, what I've been hearing is they want politics out of the schools. They want education back to basics, beating math, student excellence. So with all respect to this motion, as a trustee, it's not my role to promote the elect respect campaign at our schools and events. I'm here to promote the multi-year strategic plan, academic excellence and faith formation for home Catholic students.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Saunders?
Am I still good?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I I will also have trouble supporting this because I believe it introduces partisanship and politics into our, into our board and I and it's and because it's not grounded in our faith, I I'm gonna have, you know, as laudable as these are, I'm gonna have trouble supporting it. I think that 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 was an important issue and an important distinction. So um, I I won't be able to support this for that at least. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you and through you, through your, Mr. Chair. Um, I just think I require still a little bit more information on the group, a little bit more about maybe funding. Whether it's a nonprofit group, um, whether or not there would be any, we don't know at this point if there would be any cost or any further amendments or principles the group might introduce. I'm just not sure that it would automatically commit us to those if they decide to make some some adjustments to the, to the, to the principles. Um, I'm not sure if it would affect rate payers or um, or any delegations that come through, depending on how we, with the board side, the delegation is respectful, if you have name calls, it's a tone. Um, I'm not sure this this would address that. And I know the Ministry of Education has recently updated uh, under the Better Schools and Students Outcomes Act about, um, a board shall be applying a code of conduct. We do have one here. And they, you know, there are some boards being investigated for various reasons. Um, and part of the code of conduct that they've updated recently mentions about, uh, the minister may take regulations, may make regulations governing codes of conduct that apply to board members, including prescribing codes of conduct, parts of code, describing manners to be addressed by codes of conduct. I feel like this is very close in line to a code of conduct. And we're using more of a third party principled approach here to be very close to them with their code of conduct. So I would propose a motion to postpone and ask the HCSB to seek ministry guidance on whether the board's endorsement of the principles of the respect movement are in alignment with the Education Act, specifically with respect to section two eighteen point two, code of conduct.
So what I'm getting is laudable amendment to the motion.
Uh, motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone. Okay, so trustee Kennedy, you're moving a motion to postpone.
A point of order, Mr. Chair, uh, motion to postpone is to a specific date.
Correct. So I need a one second. You're just getting a.
But I didn't hear in the motion, I didn't hear, I heard it was contingent on hearing back from the ministry as according to specifically.
Yeah, I was just getting to it. So trustee, uh, Kennedy, what's the postpone is, let me read that out to you. To postpone, only the time to reach the motion is postponed, can be debated. So you've got to give a time.
None.
Let me start another list here.
You can send the the motion to Director Klein or see.
Do you send it out to?
You can take a five minute recess and also.
No, no, just motion, motion to postpone to a certain date.
Okay. But there was more of a ministry guidance, motion to postpone pending ministry. It was just a plan. It wasn't, it was for a specific reason, not just to postpone generally.
Okay, here in the middle of a motion, we cannot take a break right now. It's for our violence. So. Do we, does this motion also have to include? Trustee Kennedy, are we clear? You cannot take a break at this point in time. So you have a motion to postpone. Could you put up the screen?
We need to, thanks. I didn't know you did it on the screen.
Could it be to defer to the ministry?
The door is, uh.
Because we can't, we don't predict the time.
So trustees, we have a company better than beating. I know it's part of the, it's a, is, in the course of discussions, it's come up, but maybe so motion to postpone, one one six.
Yes, the point of qualifications. Uh, do we also in motion have to direct here to forward this to the ministry? Is there, do we have to put action?
That's a separate action altogether. The motion to postpone is a motion to postpone to a particular time. We're not debating the contents, what we are going to get from the ministry that's separate.
And if the ministry doesn't respond in ninety days.
That's not in the purview of the trustees, of the control of trustees. We, trustee, the board of trustees can only put a motion and we cannot post third parties, do not have controls.
So would that be reasonable to say six months or something to give the ministry enough time?
That's the time you put, that's the time you put in your motion to postpone for six months. But we do not have control over the ministry.
So point of privilege, Mr. Chair, we have a motion to postpone to when?
You do not have.
So do we not have a notion, motion to postpone on the table right now?
Yes, no, trustee Kennedy wants to put a motion to postpone. Trustee Kennedy?
Sending it to you now.
Can you send it to?
Sure.
So we need to have your time.
Yeah, it's just that.
You have a closing. Okay, trustees, uh, we have a motion up here on screen. Trustee Kennedy is the second. So we are not going to debate in motion. We're going to debate with the time, the ingredients.
A point of order, you can't refer a a motion to somebody outside of the board. We can refer to an ad hoc committee or a statu- a statutory committee. We have no control over the ministry, so it's not a valid motion. The the valid motion would be to stop at ninety days. So and then anything independently you seek information could be brought to the board at that time.
So this is, uh, let me read the motion.
Suspend.
It's a lot of motion to refer, motion to refer to a standing committee of the board.
In that motion, there is referring. Of course, there's an action to refer. So the motion for post- postpone has to stop at ninety days. And then anything other information you seek would be independent of this motion.
Yes.
Because we can only refer motions, actions from motions, to a statutory committee or an ad hoc committee.
Right. I, uh, I agree as per bylaws, the motion postponed, it's only the same. Anything after ninety days is not, uh, postponed, correct?
Correct.
So everything after ninety days. So everything after ninety days. Would be, would have to be deleted. For the motion to be in order. Okay.
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair, is that January seventeenth? I counted very quickly ninety days for the date. Is that January seventeen twenty twenty-six?
So ninety days today is.
I counted, I think it's January seventeenth, but I'm a little tired and I use my fingers.
So let's put the date in there, ten, January. In present.
That's January nineteenth.
January nineteenth.
Close.
Okay. You okay with that, trustee Kennedy?
Yes, I'm just wondering, have you, have you, have you seek any legal opinion on the validity of the motion?
That's a different topic. Motion to postpone. You're okay to proceed. Right, but you go.
Can we ask clarifying questions? So how, how do we know with this motion? That. Should go to the ministry?
There'll be several actions.
Can we do that right after this, after your saying?
Or subsequent part.
This motion is only motion postponed. If you have anything else, it is outside this motion.
Okay.
Trustee Kennedy, are you okay with this?
Yeah.
So trusty Kennedy moves this uh motion postpone, looking for a second. That's the soundness. Okay, the motion is in order, placed on the table, trustee Kennedy. You have.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I do think you should probably change the word campaign to movement.
You have moved and seconded that.
Okay, fine, but it's a movement on the website.
If you want to change something, it'll have to be a friendly amendment with all of trusted on. What's the word you want?
Campaign should be movement.
Okay, campaign, the trustees, our trustees are okay to change the word campaign. To.
Yeah.
Online, this is a friendly amendment. From trustee Kennedy, changing the word campaign to movement. Any objections online?
Yeah. Powell, I object.
Okay, so it cannot be a friendly. Movement, so we go with the original. Motion that was moved and seconded by trustee Kennedy. Seconded by trustee Saunders. Okay, trustee uh Kennedy, you have five minutes to speak only to the date. That's uh being proposed. Okay.
Yeah, thank you through your Mr. Chair, this will give us some time to uh reflect on the motion and maybe have additional motions. Um or contact the ministry, whether individually or as a group, um to see if there's any, any commentary on this uh on this movement. And how it affects uh some of the Education Act and. Something we could put as more of a policy.
Trustee, any questions? Regarding this motion, trustee Adelie. You're debating one of these.
Sorry, Chair. Sorry, Chair, I'll address, yes.
Do you know other trustees' questions? So take it, go debate, and famous debate. Trustee Powell.
Yeah, through your chair, I guess I'm just concerned about all these changes. Like, it feels like we're just postponing this, so. How is this different than just voting it down? Like, what is the point of just delaying, delaying? If you don't want to sign it, don't sign it. Like, you're not being forced to do anything. So what is, what's your method? I'm asking, like, debating about.
So we have a process in place. You have a viral state how we go about motions, bending motions. Making amendments to amendments, and we need to follow the process. Every trustee has a. And a right to bring motions and amendments to the table, so we are in the process right now. And we'd like to, we'd like to continue the process. So do you have?
Chair, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is that not the point of, um like, are we not supposed to read ahead of time? And if we have an issue, isn't that when we ask questions and ask for more before just bringing all these changes to the table?
So that's the whole point of discussion and debate question time, right? It's a process. Right, so we are going through the motions right now, we have gone through uh the original motion. We got through one amendment, they're going through a second amendment now, so it's a process that we all have to respect. Everyone's opinion around the table and with the process. Right now, it's a motion to postpone. Uh we all need to respect the trustees. Uh our request to postpone. And if you don't agree with that, you have options not to hold on there either. Right, so we do not speculate on trustees' intentions, so.
I'm asking, actually, I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to understand why delaying it is going. Do you think delaying it that, like, three months, we're gonna have an answer?
Okay, uh there's a question to trustee Kennedy, trustee Kennedy.
I thought this was debate time.
So we are debating the time three months.
Right, so debate is not question period, it's debate.
Debate time.
It's not really a debate, it's commentary.
Trustee Paul, because trustee Paul is removed, she doesn't get a feel of the boardroom, so.
Question time or.
Yeah, under three months.
Well, that's the limit, right? That's how long we're allowed. So we can't go over ninety, so it's either zero or ninety.
Okay.
Right, and ministries. We we have a, we have a a letter to the ministry in December, this past January about doing a board audit, we haven't received a response apparently, so it does take time.
Yeah, so trustee Powell, does it answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other trustee uh question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just trustee Kennedy, we're debating the date, January nineteenth is a Monday. So would you like to revise the date to put it on a Tuesday or?
Yeah. I know.
Yeah.
We don't mind, we had, that's ninety-one days.
Okay, that's ninety days. Okay. Okay, thank you, trustees, thank you, I share. Uh with that, we shall close discussion, trustee Kennedy, you have three minutes to. Close discussion on your motion to postpone, three minutes.
That's okay, we can both.
Thank you. Uh we shall take it to a recorded, what trustees have been worried on the motion in front of us, that's moved by trustee Kennedy, seconded by trustee Saunders, it's a motion to postpone. The date we see on screen. Uh trustee Kelly, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Adelie?
In favor.
Trustee Perestram?
Opposed.
Trustee, you know, opposed. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee, uh, Vashav, Chalana?
Opposed.
So we have in favor. Five opposed, no extension, motion to postpone fails. So we are back to a main motion, which was, we finished question period, that motions, uh we go in the process of uh of uh. Debate time. Trustee Saunders has spoken, trustee Hannah, trustee Carabella, trustee Saunders spoke again, like, given another opportunity, trustee Kennedy has spoken. And uh any other trustees would like to debate on the motion in front of us? Trustee Adelie? You have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair, through your chair, I simply wanted to share my opinion about um this motion being passed. Um this motion is, I do believe, rooted in the Catholic social teachings, and also, um as I said before, the second commandment. First, to bring to everyone's attention, um a couple cons motion does have, so potential perceived partnership. Um enforced challenges, and the biggest one is freedom of expression and consideration, and it could be limited. Um I do, I do strongly believe, um it's important to protect all staff members and all staff members, not only at the Holy Catholic School Board. But of all communities, I believe everyone should feel safe and respected in their work environment. And reading what some of these principles have had to go through is truly discerning and heartbreaking, but I simply believe that it's truly important um for. Feedback on everybody's end, because the only way we learn is through feedback. And I think this will limit feedback, and I think because of this motion, motion in place, people could feel less likely to give necessary feedback. And yes, it is important to, like I said before, not to be redundant, to make sure that everyone's safe in their workplace environment. But also seconding what you said before, um if you believe this is a good motion and everything like that, you can simply go to the website and sign up. I don't believe we all have to agree together, because I believe, as I said before, it takes away our autonomy and individual, individuality. As we can see, as we see, as we said, as also trustee Powell said, online, there's been a lot of changes, a lot of people want, what I've seen, have wanted to postpone, sarcasm being in place, have wanted to postpone, have wanted to make changes. So I simply think that this shouldn't pass. Um I've seen a lot of things being made, and at the end of the day. Democracy speech is all extremely important, and the more we limit it, the less we improve. So I just want everyone to think of that while we go. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Adelie. Any other trustees would like to debate? If not. I shall close debate, and trustee uh Agnew, you have three minutes to conclude.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I won't take that long, I will say, respecting all the opinions around the table, I will say this is not just about um employees in their workplace, this is. About elected officials who constantly face attack. Um both online and in public spaces, um elected officials who have been threatened to be dragged out of their homes. Um who have been threatened to be hung um from the tree in their front yard, who have been threatened to be burned. We have seen uh going through resolutions at this table, um some of the attacks that we have had, so this is not just a matter of people expressing their opinions. Um these are people, uh people who are attacking elected officials for the work that they're doing, we're elected to do a job, and regardless of how our position on something is. No one should be, um no one should be subjected to that, and this is saying that we don't support that. Um and I actually believe that this is what we need to be democratic, I believe that people cannot be democratic and make um. People are gonna be afraid to speak out, to vote, to say what's on their minds for fear of attack. So I actually think having this in place protects democracy versus the other way around. I don't think this limits anybody's ability to have an opinion. Um I think this actually protects someone's ability to do their jobs as an elected official. I will also say, um with with respect to. The Ministry of Education, our CO Terminus Board, as I've said repeatedly this evening, did pass this motion unanimously, and I can't imagine that they are in violation of anything to do with the Education Act. Um so um hopefully, that would put some people's minds at ease. If you choose to support this, I would be grateful for your support, if you don't, I also respect that opinion, um so thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Give me a second, my computer's shut off. So with that, trusted, we have completed question time, debate time, we're done to amendments in the process. And uh we have closed discussion, so with that, we shall now take a vote on the motion, on the main motion. Uh sorry, I just can't see anything out here because my. It shut down. Trustee, the motion is in front of us, it was moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Powell. So it's all the vote undecided. Trustee Saunders, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Adelie?
Opposed.
Trustee Perestram?
In favor.
Trustee Hannah?
Okay.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee uh Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Ogunchanara?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
So we have five in favor, three opposed, motion carries. Thank you, trustees, for a great discussion. We shall now move on to. I think nine point three, proposed facility real projects. Uh. Can we stand at these trustees for a few minutes, for three minutes, while I, my computer starts as much? His standards is. It's gonna be a good picture.
If you have a reset?
Okay, go back, back to. Okay. We move on to our next order of business, which is item nine point three, proposed twenty twenty six facility renewal project. This item was a staff report at the September sixteen board meeting. It's now an action item, section item has two parts. Uh, I will first ask Superintendent Murray to speak to this item and then I will read that place each item individually on the table and then vote on them separately. Okay, so Superintendent Murray, you're.
Thanks, Chair, for you. We had the school renewal projects for summer twenty twenty six. Uh, the report is as presented at the September board meeting. Uh, in the future, major renewal works on eight schools and the estimated cost is approximately seven point hundred dollars. Um, the projects will be funded, mobile sources that we have board, uh, which we have a current balance of approximately thirteen point six million dollars in those accounts. And as you mentioned, Chair, uh, we have two motions for consideration tonight. Uh, the first to approve the projects and the second to approve the budget at seven point one two five million dollars.
Thank you, Superintendent Murray. Uh, let's put the, uh, report up on the screen and let's see the motions. Trustee, do you have access to the report?
You can't speak?
Yeah. Okay, so the first motion, I'll read the motion, then move it seconded, we'll take questions after that and we'll continue the second part. Resolve the Holland Catholic District School Board authorized staff to proceed with the proposed twenty twenty six facility renewal projects. May I have a move up? If you're a mover, it's Carabella. If you're a second there.
I'll second it.
Sure, on to another. Um, motion on the table, I will now open up question time for trustees, trusty, we have questions for Superintendent Murray.
Questions?
Something wrong? Trustee Sanders?
Yes, sorry, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I know last year we had approved some funding for, I believe it was Our Lady Victory. And I, I, the head team in the line, I don't see, nothing's happening. Does that have to be brought back and voted on or are we in the process of moving forward on that?
Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, that was for a new addition there, so it was part of ministry funding for a new addition and not part of the renewal work piece. Um, so that is going through the design improvement process right now. Our hope is to start next spring, but that works. Uh, and it will have to take place in the two phases. Uh, where it's like, uh, classroom edition on one corner of the building and then a childcare kindergarten edition on another corner. So it's probably going to be some works on one of those additions next summer and then more works in August. A quick follow-up, as I recall, there was some land purchase that we had to negotiate with the archdiocese movie successful on it. We're working to do that as well, right? Thank you.
Go ahead.
That's it. You got it.
Okay, now, has any questions, Superintendent Murray? On the motion, let's see on the screen. No, get my hands. Something really wrong, it's not good. Okay, trustee Kennedy?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. You worked hard, Mary. Uh, so we have an estimate of seven point one two five based on your experience. I'm sure that's reasonable. You mentioned we're going to be paying for it from debailed capital funding and the capital reserve. So just the capital funding part first, is that just operating, like just regular part of a four inch million? How much is from each?
Superintendent Murray? Yeah, we, we, this is the same question we answered at last.
Um, so we said, you said you'd find out.
Well, no, we said that we totally expect to come from the capital reserve at this point. But we have other sources like school, school condition improvement, SCI funding, school renewal allocation, uh, SRA. We also have the accessibility fund also, we'll take from those pools and need to fund these, these projects.
So we don't know how much we might need from the reserve?
At this point, we don't think we need any, but if there are things that are ineligible to be used as part of these other funding sources, we may. But, but, yeah, it's for the details we get into as we start planning projects and get actual votes. Right now, that's just estimates on the, on pages.
Superintendent Murray? Uh, Mr. Chair, you don't need the problem.
Shouldn't have known. It's watching. Uh, Mr. Chair, through you to trustee Kennedy, that's correct, I think, because Superintendent Merrick just mentioned it. So we plan, I think it's about seven and a half billion or so for this project. Uh, we have funding sources, our school renewal grants, about five billion. School condition improvement, the restricted size four point one. School condition improvement accessibility is two point six, so like we should have enough to cover everything without having to get into the reserve. So if we hit the seven point five, we might need to utilize any of our reserves, that's responsible.
Trustee Kennedy?
But if we do need it, if we do need to use the reserves, through you, Mr. Chair, would that be a motion for trustees? Or just that this is approved, it's kind of embedded in there that if you use it, you just take what you need?
That's, that's what we're doing right now, yeah.
Just lastly, just regarding this lastly, regarding the capital reserve, you mentioned before, it was like nine million out six million, couple of years.
I saw.
Yeah, so it's. Is it because of projects like this? Do you ever see us getting that back to nine or ten million from five million?
Yeah.
Superintendent Murray?
Mr. Chair, through you to trustee Kennedy, uh, depends on how we do with our, uh, surplus at the end of the year. We will add more back into it if we have the funding to such. So, that's a lesson. And it's not going down because of poor planning or that we're overspending.
Like the project?
Planning, I think, he saved that money up to place turf fields and the field expired and you need to place.
Yeah, I said projects, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Kennedy, any others speakers? Saying now? Uh, any, any trustees would like to debate on the side? His hand is up, trustee, trustee Kennedy, your hand is up? Yeah. Okay. Saying all the trustees hand up, please use your hand, I correct, I just can't talk. Uh, I shall call the word on the motion in front of us. Resolve the Holland Catholic District School Board authorized staff to proceed with the proposed twenty twenty six facility renewal projects. That item was moved by trustee Carabella, seconded by Monsieur Rohan Chanada. I shall call the vote on this item. Trustee Murphy, how do you vote?
Favor.
Trustee Adelie? Trustee Perestrom?
Favors.
Trustee Hannah? Trustee Carabella?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favors.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Monsieur Rohan Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Sanders in favor. So, yeah. Even favor none opposed, that motion carries. I shall now read the second part. Of the motion, of the motion. And we have it on screen. Resolve the Holland Catholic District School Board authorized staff expense funds from, uh, authorized staff to expense funds from available capital funding and the capital reserve for the proposed twenty twenty six facility renewal projects. And then the expenditures will not exceed seven million, one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. They have a move for this item, looking for a move of these.
Come on, man.
By Monsieur Rohan Chanada, looking for a second of these, trustee Murphy seconds. Shall open up question time, trustee, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? Saying now? For questions, trustee? Okay, um, question time closed, debate time, if you would like to debate on the side. Saying none, trustees, uh, close this, I'll call the vote on the motion in front of us. The motion was moved by trustee Rohan Chanada, seconded by trustee Murphy. Trustee Carabella, how do you vote?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Monsieur Rohan Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Adelie?
In favor.
Trustee Perestrom?
In favor.
Trustee Hannah?
Favor.
We have even favor none opposed, no extension, no carries. I shall now move on to. The next order of business is. It's nice when the computer dies, isn't it? Uh, staff reports, there are no staff reports, we now will want information items, item number eleven, eleven point one. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty eight, multi years strategic plan progress report. Your, like the client presented the report and as they spoke to trustee, just ask questions regarding the reference report which we've not had in point time. Early school, uh, program concerns. Pick it up, so let the client with a flow present, uh, advice to you both.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair. It's a, it's an honor and a pleasure to be able to present to you, uh, this evening, a report regarding the progress thus far. Um, with regard to our multi years teaching plan, really, which has been noted earlier by trustee Carabella, is something that unites all of us as trustees and staff. And as employees at this board. So I will, uh, note, first of all, great bit of thanks to everyone here that has helped contribute to creating this and to staff who execute this. Uh, in terms of this, uh, report, which is rooted in a lot of statistics, quantitative and qualitative. Uh, it goes without saying that we have to tip our hat, uh, to our research department in particular. Uh, Dr. Collmore, who leads that, and, uh, Dr. Jen McDonald. Uh, Zoe Walters and Dr. Lombardo, who is with us and faithful with us all evening. Uh, the kids probably aren't in bed yet, so you can stay a little longer. Um, and Rob Franco, who is, uh, again, works with, uh, and is led, uh, uh, fearlessly by Andrea Swenden. Uh, he is, uh, creative design officer for Strategic Comms. Because it's not just a matter of articulating our, our M Y S P. But it's also, uh, to monitor it and to communicate that to, uh, our stakeholders here at the board and, and outside, just to show all the good work we're doing in. And the, uh, sense of what benchmarks we have. So it reminds you of a bit of a timeline here and I will do a bit of a back and forth with Dr. Collmore. Since, uh, uh, she has a, a key role in, in at least a lot of the data that's projected. I'm just going to move a bit on my screen here. Uh, trustees and others are aware, perhaps maybe not the student trustees, that one of the key, uh, projects that a, a board of trustees endeavors in is creation of and, uh, the monitoring of multi year strategic plan. The last, uh, this one has its genesis story in September of twenty four. It's not that long ago, a year ago, but it goes back earlier into very early, uh, late twenty two and in twenty three. Where we did a lot of work to create this, we, uh, had a lot of, uh, uh, nets cast to get a sense from our stakeholders of what they saw as important. And the result was this strategic plan and, uh, it was therefore initiated a year ago. And that guides the work that we do here for the next four years. Uh, the Director of Education reports back to trustees on this, on specific steps undertaken. Uh, M Y S Ps are in the Education Act, is one of the, uh, the main, uh, missions of a school board. And to support this work, monitoring strategy was developed to track progress in each of the priority areas. And again, we know that probably, uh, in our sleep, achieving, believing, belonging and becoming, becoming being the, uh, priority that emerged from our last, uh, uh, opportunity to get a sense from our community. And to identify data sources and inform our analysis. So in terms of the, the what that was identified by trustees, uh, the specifics and the hows of what we do were identified by staff in, uh, myriad of theaters play here, uh, at the board. I will just look over at Dr. Collmore, is there anything you wanted to add at this point?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, I, I, I guess I could just add a little bit of background in terms of the indicators. Um, in the report, there is a full list of the, um, indicators that are used for year one of monitoring. And those were derived from the action plans that various departments had shared with the Office of the Director. Um, and those were brainstormed by the research department and then fed back to the department leads and then a discussion at senior table and then ultimately, um, approved by Director Klein.
All right, thank you. And again, we don't need to look too far, the reports that we have before us today, uh, have the structure of our M Y S P. Everything we do somehow connects to the M Y S P, so this is not a, oh yeah, we have an M Y S P moment. Uh, this is something that is, uh, really speaks to everything we do. In terms of this report, there are four components to it, we'll add kind of a fifth at the end. Um, and that is the, the, uh, collection and review of department action plans. And there were about a dozen of those through special education, through curriculum, through facilities, uh, all, all through our board. Uh, the midpoint strategic review meetings with the Director of Education, a good part of, uh, late December, all through January and into February, Dr. Collmore and I held meetings with our senior leadership teams and some of their, um, uh, uh, key, uh, agents there. Uh, in order to kind of get a sense of what their logic model was for change and how they were doing and get a sense of indicators. Then there was an online M Y S P monitoring survey, we'll talk about, that was in, uh, June. And, uh, some staff reflection on the M Y S P implementation in schools. Kind of qualitative data in terms of interviews with, in this case, key, key people who are principals and vice principals. And then again, we'll add just a little more in terms of a dashboard that we'll be looking at at the end of this. In terms of the action plans, the process really involved from, uh, really before September of twenty two and, or twenty four, heading into the year, the opportunity for each of these departments to create plans. And the process involved us reviewing all the action plans and to discuss with those in those departments, uh, the supports, uh, that would be, um, uh, distilled through this. Each plan identified as Dr. Collmore said, key initiatives, the whats, uh, of what we're doing and more specifically, and some measurable outputs which really evidence of, uh, the actions that occurred. So here's what we want to do, how we know when we're getting, we did this to, uh, for the reason of trying to establish a, a clear baseline for measuring progress across all M Y S P priorities. And I'll just depart there for a second to say that since this is the first year that we've been through, we've established the baseline for it. So the temptation might be to go, how is that compared to three years ago? Uh, in, in, in that case, that's not in terms of our measurables and our research, what we're doing. The baseline has been established, which is, which is great in itself, from there we can, uh, build. To ensure system wide alignment between department strategies. So as we looked at these, we were able to see the alignments and tweak them. There was a template that was used by, by all departments, so we could have alignment. And to strengthen data form, uh, decision making and accountability. We discussed very often from our E C Es and our teachers who work with students all the way up, that we try and do, uh, make decisions based on data and form, and form research. We do the same here in terms of our M Y S P. So that's the first step in terms of our, uh, getting a sense of, uh, our benchmarks and how we're doing. The midpoint strategic review meeting with the director, again, that lasted for a month to two months. Uh, that involved, uh, us meeting and, uh, we met with department heads from twelve departments. Uh, Dr. Collmore and I looked at each department's actions and how they connected the M Y S P. There's really nothing rogue in terms of people that, we have great professionals here, you know, you know, we've worked hard on these M Y S Ps. What we're doing should align with it, so we're not wasting resources, whether it's people, whether it's money, or whether it's other resources. And we discussed the links between what other departments are doing as well. Like any big organization, any successful organization, uh, it's not unusual for departments to uh, need the opportunity to say, actually, you know, student success is doing something similar to that. And very often the answer was, yeah, John, we are doing that already, we're connecting. But it's, it was good opportunity to uh, to be mindful of that, so that we have some synergies. Um, and then why did we do this? Was to ensure again that the department remained aligned with the M Y S P priorities. To identify areas requiring additional support or adjustment, support wasn't necessarily always money. But sometimes it was uh, the support in terms of research or other things. To reinforce culture of reflection, shared ownership and continuous improvement. Beauty of this is that data is in many ways not personal. That it does help us take away feelings from some of the work we do, so that we could, so we can make decisions that are uh, sober and thoughtful. The third pro, uh, component of this was the online M Y S P monitoring survey. That many of you will remember from the uh, first uh, three weeks of June of this last year, so as the school year ended, perfect time again to get a sense of how we're landing. That was open to staff, was open to parents and guardians and students. Most of the responses were from parents and guardians, not, not a surprise. A total of seven hundred and sixty stakeholders responded to the survey. And uh, I'm told, Dr. Collmore, that was positive and a, and a, and a good thing in terms of past surveys. And the results are summarized in Appendix A of the board report. It's important to know that these, again, are perceptions by, to a large extent, people who uh, are not within the schools day to day, but would get a sense of uh, of, of what their thoughts are, the feelings are to it. Uh, Lisa, is anything you want to say regarding that aspect or caveat?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I'll just highlight that the, the, the respondents were asked to indicate how much H B S B is making progress towards each specific strategic objective in the M Y S P. So that was the question, and the rating scale was um, not, we're not making any progress, to we're making a great deal of progress. And they were, they were asked that rating scale for each of the question.
Oh, thank you. And we'll get to that in a minute, in terms of what those scales work, so I think that's important in terms of the decision that we made. And I think being ambitious in our, in our survey itself, uh, but I'll get to that in, in a moment. We did this to understand what the perceptions of our community are, so just good practice. Uh, it's again a mandate that we would be doing this, to identify strengths and where there might be areas further uh, need or focus, and to ensure that there's transparency and accountability in how we report our progress. In terms of what we've heard uh, here, uh, we uh, have some of these that I'll just walk through very briefly, and I know you've seen already, but I do want to point out the fact that, as Dr. Collmore said, the the choices that one would have in this connected directly uh, to the indicators of our N Y S P, so it's nothing deviating from it, everything there is a question on one of those indicators that stem from our goals. Exactly what was set out in this room, uh, nearly a year and a half ago. But in terms of the, the scale of their choices, I think it is important to know that what we're seeing is, what we're identifying here is, I think ambitious components of it, which are, uh, which are perception of X, whichever one of these there are. And in terms of how it's landing, and again, the scale was a great deal or quite a bit. That's what we're highlighting here. The ones lower than that, that we wouldn't, and I would argue that if we included them, would make a big difference in it, would be that middle ground where it says someone is the one, that's a, that's sort of in some areas, a little fat area of where people landed. And then, of course, the, the bottom ones are not at all, or very little. Uh, but I would argue and state that I think in terms of our ambition, it's good to say, no, we want to know if you're looking at this and saying it's quite a bit, or it is a great deal, the further ones of it, or ends of it. Not sure if Lucy want to comment on that, because every one of those things is a choice in terms of how we want to scale.
Oh, I, I think, through you, Mr. Chair, um, I think Dr. Klein has said it.
Okay, and I think it's good to, because these are benchmarks, we want to be fairly fearless and go, okay, let's, we're going to aim high and see what we've got here. Look at, in terms of the achieving, if you look at those, those, those goals, every one of them are noted here. In terms of how people felt toward each of those goals, I'm not going to repeat them, because obviously we have quite a few. You've seen these as well, in terms of believing. Terms of belonging. And then the one that was the addition or the becoming. As the school year wound down, we culminated one of the ongoing activities, which is our, our senior leadership team, namely specifically superintendents who are in, in charge of, of supervising families of schools. Uh, they meet regularly with their principals and their teams to, for a lot of reasons, but one of the key ongoing reasons is to talk about how are we doing in terms of the N Y S P. Anything that's embedded in this, could be student achievement plan, could be any one, one of our other plans that feed into it. But by the end of the year, the questions became, okay, it was an opportunity for you to uh, give a sense of what your final thoughts are on this too. And um, fifty of the schools, we have some solid responses from. The question that was for those principals and their teams, very straightforward. Looking back over the year, looking back over this M Y S P and all the goals who have articulated that are embedded in uh, in, in often your student achievement plan. To what extent are you guys making progress uh, in each of those areas? And uh, there was a great, in terms of to a, a, a moderate to a large extent, based on what the responsibilities or the responses were. For that, I just want to make sure we understand that it's important that we do that, so we catch what is an M Y S P uh, looking like? What roots is it taking at each of our school sites? Uh, because it is important to know that what we do here, whether it says trustees, or whether it says a senior team. Uh, it, it doesn't mean a lot if it's not taking root in each of the schools. So that was very important to have in terms of its background. And obviously compliments of the other survey, uh, we, data we had and to take the opportunity to, to, to celebrate. So to that response or the question, to what extent is your school making progress in each of the areas? And focus on this was, uh, to a moderate or a large extent. These are what the responses were from, for each of these goals, from each of these priorities. Uh, the responses from the principals and their teams is pretty stunning in terms of, but their thoughts were about how this is being actualized in the uh, context of each of the schools and their school communities. I'll turn over to Dr. Collmore, anything I missed on that? Finally, and um, and this is where I'll go to again, to the research team, but also uh, again, praise Andrea, her team, particularly Rob. Because there was a lot of work done to ensure that our board site, uh, when it comes to what we're calling this uh, monitor, monitoring, M Y S P monitoring dashboard. Uh, not only was aesthetically attractive, very functional, but what Rob thought of, that we didn't always think of, was it has to work on a phone. And uh, it, it, you know, people generally, if they're out and about, aren't bringing their laptops with them. And so he put in those extra hours and that time to ensure that if you were to use your phone, you can see it functions very well in it. Uh, because when it doesn't, you can tell, because you're, you're trying to uh, deal with font that's impossible to deal with. So I will switch over quickly just to talk about that monitoring dashboard. And the monitoring dashboard is, voila, worked out. Um, again, just a little extra in terms of looking at the impact uh, of our M Y S P through other data points beyond these four that I mentioned earlier. Some of these are ones that are uh, ones you wouldn't, you, you would recognize fully. E Q O data is one that comes up, notwithstanding the big delay for this year. E Q O data for last year was uh, was still uh, important. School climate surveys and other surveys uh, uh, like that were part of this as well. The department records from each of our departments, uh, and other data that we, we get from our schools and our departments. They make up this part of it as well, and they make up an area that is, I think, pretty sharp when it comes to our board, and you can draw on the board, you can go down here, where you simply click on our areas here. So in terms of achieving, you'd be able to see for each of these objectives. We uh, gathered data from uh, several sources. I think we're looking at more than sixty uh, indicators that we were looking at here. And just to give a sense of how each of those goals from the four priorities of our M Y S P uh, were reached and attained. So for instance, when we look at achievement and look at the first uh, monitoring uh, or the first uh, 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 objective of that. This comes from grade twelves on the right, percentage of students who are aware of certain opportunities and options. And again, get a sense of what they are aware of in terms of where they could be going in their, uh, in their future. Uh, number of students that are enrolled in certain programs. Good as a benchmark as we go into next year, because we can see if those enrollment levels are, are growing uh, or not. Um, looking at students who were able themselves of some support over last year in terms of uh, typically language development or math, math skills. The addition of supports, uh, resources that we had offered for our schools that would integrate the experience of Black Canadians or students into the curriculum and the school environment. Again, we know that's part of our overall, one of our overall goals uh, here as uh, as a, a school system. I love the way this just sort of ticker tapes in front of you as well. Um, the math achievement action plan, eight hundred and ten of our staff access the scope and sequence that superintendent Spivak talked about earlier. Sense of, hey, not only where I'm teaching math, but where is the teacher in the grade for me and after me going as well? So that I know how this is a continuum and how I can help out at all. Talked again, there's data here in terms of how students use some uh, uh, supports as well in terms of math. Terms of staff, ninety two percent of staff felt positively connected to their schools. Percentage of students and parents who gave positive feedback related to teaching and learning environments, there it is in front of you as well. Fifteen thousand of our students have used my blueprint, which is again, an online tool for mapping out their pathways and eventually their careers. I won't dig too deeply into these for too long, but I think it's pretty amazing to see things like percentage of our Black students who reported feeling they have opportunities to contribute to their school, whether it's in elementary or secondary. And that's again, data we got from, from our students. Terms of believing, again. Data here is important and opportunity to celebrate what we do. For example, percentage of students that said the overall spiritual atmosphere of this school, in their school force, is positive and welcoming. Pretty amazing in terms of what our elementary and secondary students are responding. Ninety seven percent of staff in the survey said that this school clearly displays images of Catholic faith. And again, I'm walking through each and every one of these, sense of how we honor and respect the inherent dignity of other students included. The opportunity to provide for initiatives to engage the school community and parishes is celebrated, celebrating our faith. Well, percentage of respondents who feel their school promotes Catholic virtues, values and practices among the elementary students, ninety five percent. We're in the nineties in every one of them, whether it's secondary students, staff or parents. People here, people in the community can go on to this dashboard and look at, again, the belonging uh, priority that we have or pillar. Cultivate schools workplaces that are safe, inclusive and welcoming. Look at the fact that we have students and staff feel they belong at school. See the numbers there as well. Each one of these, again, reflects the work that's been done in each of these areas and reflects in many cases, some very positive responses, a very positive uh, sense of what our schools and our, our school staff and students are experiencing. Hundred ninety seven classes participated in mental health and literacy modules. That's not to mention that mental health and literacy, mental health literacy, it's not being addressed, but in terms of the modules that have been created, uh, they are. Then our perceptions of mental health. Promote staff mental health, staff are aware of our employee assistance program. We're fairly data rich, as you can see. Ninety two percent of parents, they'll welcome at their child's school. You can see all the opportunities come from welcome to kindergarten nights and others that, that uh, our parents and our communities again, uh, celebrate and are grateful for. Terms of embedding equity inclusion or policies and actions. We could talk a little more about this, in terms of policies, procedures where it was a uh, a, an in-depth focus on that, you can see them there, but I would argue that all our policies and procedures as uh, trustee Orin Chenada would articulate or agree how that goes into all of our provisions. Something that the Chair and I have been very proud of is the work that we've been doing with the Anti-Black Racist Strategy Committee, something that stemmed from the notice this motion many years ago, from this very room, and from the audits that occurred. And from the work and the planning that occurred at every level. Uh, as our Black community holds us very much accountable, and rightly so. And this street committee is one small part, but one very important part of the work we do. And it, again, it's twenty people in it that has moved through it, and we've met, uh, that we're heading into our seventh meeting in the next few weeks. Percentage of staff, say professional development, gave some good ideas about their current role, is all part of the work that we're doing to develop and support our staff. All part of that objective that was articulated by this group of trustees and the staff. Leadership development opportunities for staff, these are merely the official ones, workshops and others that superintendent R and her team have created. Not to mention the endless number of informal ones. And again, we see that we had a great year in terms of building new schools, in terms of going through the process of seeking feedback from uh, our communities. Uh, and again, there's a lot of work to that, there's a lot of uh, listening and listening to people's frustrations sometimes, and listen to their ideas as we create new school communities and new boundaries for them as well. So I could go on and on and on. Going to ask, uh, Dr. Collmore, is anything you would want to add to this? To the fact that we have these four direct gauges of uh, how the M Y S P was playing out? And then, um, in terms of looking through just trove of data, uh, that the research department and all of us have been able to identify uh, other aspects and senses of how we're doing, uh, that you can see in the uh, uh, the, uh, the indicators on the board as well, in terms of the dashboard, Doctor?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, so I think just to conclude, Dr. Director Klein has, has gone over all of the very secondary activities that we undertook this year. You should also notice that this year, or for this strategic plan, we've taken a more methodological approach in terms of really looking at all the different types of data that we have across the system, across the entire year, and not just a particular time point. Um, a lot of progress is evident from all of the work and all of the meetings that Director Klein and I had with all of the senior team. The amount of things that were implemented in year one is phenomenal. Um, and I think that it's really represented in the various monitoring activities that are presented in the report. Um, currently, senior staff are reviewing all of the data and are using this really to refine their goals for, for year two of our strategic plan. And the idea is really to build upon all of the successes that we accomplished in year one. And really focus on areas of growths that have been identified um, across the pillars. And it's really our hope to, you know, ensure that our actions remain rooted in And it's really our hope to, you know, ensure that our actions remain rooted in our Catholic faith and guided by our gospel values. And really that there's alignment in the strategic priorities to support, you know, the welcoming and achievement of all students in the system. So thank you for your.
Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report. Let's now open up the floor to trustees for questions or comments. First up is trustee Agnew.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I don't have any questions. I just want to highlight to everyone that's involved with moving these forward, just the appreciation. It's it's not easy. Sometimes it's reframing thinking, sometimes it's completely changing the way things are being done, it's finding new ways to do things, being responsive and reflective of the feedback that you're getting. So these are easy tasks. And, you know, everybody has a lot of things going on. So I just, you know, I just want to commend you for the work that's going on, the constant checking in to make sure that it is being reflective of everything that we hope that it can be. And I know that this is not easy work. So I just wanted to, you know, based on this report this evening, I just wanted to thank everybody for the work that they're doing. So thank you for that.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Kennedy.
Yeah, thank you through, Mr. Chair. So just wondering if there's like a a goal for the quite a bits and great deal, it's forty-four to sixty-four, the range. Do we have like a target we want to hit for year two or do we have like a?
First, Dr. Colmore.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for that question, trustee Kennedy. I mean, it is year one. So as Director Klein mentioned, this is our baseline to sort of establish a starting point. And for for us, the first year was really about listening and learning from all that we heard from our stakeholders and our staff and our students and our senior team. And it's about setting realistic goals for improvement. So obviously, the hope is that we see improvement in in all of these indicators on our dashboard as well as through our perceptual survey. So that is the goal in years to come.
So just regarding, I'm glad you put a lot of comments, there's some constructive criticism that we did leave out. So just like one thing that stood over me was a parent or someone saying students have had EAs removed from junior grades. Is that the case? I didn't think we we removed any EAs in our budget. Is that actually, did that actually happen?
So let me pass this on to Director Klein with the comments.
Yeah, it's just what it says.
Director Klein.
I'm going to go to Dr. Colmore and just first of all about in terms of the the art and science of gathering data. The drawbacks and the positives of this form of data.
So so through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy again. So in previous years, the MYSP monitoring survey did not have an opportunity for stakeholders to provide a comment. And it was requested time and time again, can we at least do a comment? So so we did include a question for for our respondents to provide any additional context about each priority area. So that particular comment is based on a theme that was provided by about forty respondents. So in the grand scheme of things, it is important to consider that particular perspective from that particular respondent. But in terms of the nature of, you know, how EAs are being distributed or supported, I think that's a better question for for Superintendent Jack Aldera to sort of highlight how that process works.
Okay, through you, Chair. So essentially, at the beginning, at the end of every year, we do capture all the students through a process, internal process that we refer to as the independence rubric. And we allocate the EAs based on student need. To your point, we did not reduce any EAs, but as schools populations may change for if there's a situation that Orin's the principal could take that allocation and prioritize one classroom for a period of time and then reallocate as the needs or the independence of the student changes. So the allocation didn't change, the process is implemented so for for planning for September into aid and transition in June. We were visited in September when we have all our students who registered arrive. And if there's any moves, we make those adjustments in June, sorry, in September. We revisit again before the Christmas break to make sure that if there's any needs that have changed, that we're responding to those students. Then we do it a third time, which used to happen very frequently throughout the year as needs change, but this allows us to give a period of settling down or to see what the needs are, assess the situation, offer support and make response respond to student needs in lifetime. So instead of allocating in June and then waiting to the following June to allocate again, we're doing so more frequently. So there may be those shifts and changes as student need evolves, but there has been no reduction in EA allocation.
Thank you. So so the total amount of EAs are the same. But there are some students who once had an EA but may no longer have an EA. That's what they're saying. Is that true?
So if if the student is in kindergarten versus a student in grade five, their needs may change. So there there isn't we're working towards independence. So it's not that if you have an EA in one grade, that will have the EA forever. But it is in response to whatever, how the student is presenting. So they may, by grade five, still require that support and they would be entitled to that support and generate that support. So it's not like, oh, they get to grade six, no more EAs. That's not how it's identifying the need. Need is based on how the student presents.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. I'll come back to you. I'll come back to you. So it's great to receive feedback from stakeholders, that's the whole purpose of collecting data. But there's a bigger picture behind the scene, things that are involved in schools and superintendents and all that stuff. So so it's great to get the feedback and thanks for the question. I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a comment and then a question again. So Director Quine, I've never seen you so excited to present this. Like you could feel the excitement of this. Honestly, I'm not being funny, like the monitoring of this dashboard, it's slick. I haven't benchmarked other boards, but I think we're probably at the top of the heap for the way this MYSP looks. So good job to everyone involved. I couldn't have done it. So well done. And very excited, you were very excited to present that, Director Quine.
It's my jam. It's, and I will just say, just sort of to to respond that, thank you. And thanks to trustees too, because you've you've consistently kept this as speaking points and edge of a pool, wherever you are and whenever you're doing your work. To go back on that, I think it's important to remember that you guys managed to do that consistently. I think Dr. Colmore and I and her team had difficulty sometimes saying what not to bring into it. Because I won't mention, but we do have a couple of superintendents who come with you know, a dump truck full of data when it comes to all sorts of nuances of programming or or and it's it's there's almost too much in terms of the information. But for those who are working directly with those students, it's it's phenomenal because now we can be able to create more personalized planning for people. And and by doing that, that engages the students more. So hopefully, there's some form of synergy that occurs there for their which spills over a course to parents. Kid is engaged and happy and fulfilled and challenged, then as the data tell you, that makes me pretty darn happy as well. So thank you.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Chair, to Dr. Colmore. So this is year one baseline and we're always trying to get more and more voice of our customer, let's say. So are there any strategies about, you know, different timing or how we're going to make sure we don't get survey fatigue? Right? We have seven hundred and sixty voices. How do we get to eight hundred and sixty voices next year and a thousand fifty the the next year? Any strategies?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question. I mean, we're always trying to work with our colleague here Andrea to better engage with our community. And so it really does require just us collaborating and coming up, brainstorming and coming up with strategies using her expertise and her team's expertise to really ensure that we are getting the message out that we are looking for feedback via the monitoring survey when the time comes. The end of the year is the best time of the year. We want to ensure that a full year of implementation or or actions have been taken. So it's hard to say like we do want to do it sooner versus later. So we kind of try to pick early June as the time. We increase the, you can increase sort of the length of time that the survey is open, but we kind of also know that people tend to do the survey once it, once they get the invitation or once they get a reminder. So maybe more reminders can help up our ultimate numbers at the end.
Just to clarify, oh, go ahead, Ms. Lyndon.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. If I can add, the other thing that we are going to be doing this year, which is new, is we're after now that you've received this report, tomorrow it will be posted on our website. So it's front and center and it's always been posted on our website. But we're also going to be sharing it with all staff and with all parents and guardians. And the reason for that is when people do, you know, provide feedback, they want to see what you've done with that feedback. It's an important part of consultation. So we're hoping that will help create interest. We're going to be very transparent about the results. And then when we go back to them in June, because I agree with Dr. Colmore, I do think it has to be June because you can't ask them in April, how did we do this year when we still have two full months left, right? So the timing, we may not be able to help, but maybe if they see what we've done, they will be more likely to respond.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, thank you.
Just just regarding achieving the class size reports, our website. We do have the elementary posted from the end of the year, but the secondary, it mentions it's twenty-four, twenty-five, but when you click on it, it's twenty-three, twenty-four. Do you know that'll be updated on the website?
In terms of the
Like due by June, right? So we can have that up there.
Okay, I don't see it here, but we'll go there. Do you have any thoughts on that superintendent office?
There were some issues with the ministry and how the rule.
I'm going to take it away from you.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There was issues with the ministry and how it would be calculated. It's been going calculation concerns, which is why we haven't put it back yet.
Just pick up louder.
Sorry.
Yeah.
There has been some concern, talk and discussion with the ministry and how it's being calculated. Things have changed, it's not being picked up correctly. So that's gone back to the ministry to for feedback as to how to suit some things we've identified to the ministry on that calculation.
Do we have, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, do we have a timeline?
We do not.
So we don't know our number for non-secondary class size?
We don't have a number that we confirm with the ministry, correct?
You don't know if we're going to get it?
Or we need to get back to us.
Since it says due June thirtieth, so I just figured.
June thirtieth is possible for a number to have because we don't have the calculations ready by June thirtieth. The ministry doesn't have them out by the end of July. So we didn't get the first I guess ministry publication until the end of July, beginning of August. So when we started noticing the problems with it.
It's lastly, do you think we're over the twenty-three or under the twenty-three for our secondary?
We are working with the ministry right now and we will come back to you.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, any other questions you have on?
Just just one fun thing, I noticed that comment, I noticed that students, twenty students participated in the survey. So I'm just wondering if our student trustees can help us get the number up for secondary students, so we have twenty respondents.
Student trustees have to have an active part. I'm sure they have conversations in your Saturday meetings and group. But this is a very important role of trustees on your strategic plan. So as you interview the role, as you learn and get more into it, you know, you have every conversation coming back to a strategic plan behind us.
Chair, you just want to, you're absolutely right in terms of that one component of it. I think that was the number. But as Dr. Colmore could remind us, there's other opportunities, we see other data in the the indicators too on site too that show information that we gather from students from other areas, correct?
Yeah, through through you, Mr. Chair. We we often talk about, you know, the importance of using multiple sources of data to get the whole picture of what is happening. So yes, there are only twenty student respondents on the survey. But in the other, in the dashboard, you know, all of the sources there do have significant representation from student groups. And so it's really important to to not necessarily focus in on just one source of data, but it's really the collective report that is of importance. And many of the dashboard indicators will mimic the good work and progress that are in various, in both elementary and secondary.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Comment and a question. In my opinion, having been around for other strategic plans, this seems that the board is taking it to the next level. It's really been indoctrinated in what we're doing. We paid attention to it before, but now it seems more like a living, breathing way of doing things. And the use of technology is quite impressive to lend itself. So hats off to everybody. Great job. And I think it will only be able to engage more people, especially once they see the data. People will want their voice to be heard. So great work as always. I'm always a huge fan of our of our team. Great job. So my question is, you know, you're always supposed to leave a positive, but I can't, I just can't do it, right? So that that five or six percent, that's always not at all. Have we analyzed the individual respondents to see if they're trending that way always?
Dr. Colmore?
So through you, Mr. Chair. That's a great question, trustee Murphy. Thank you. So as you know, on the survey itself, there there was a question that asked the respondent about their role. And so we do have the data broken down by role. We haven't provided in the report, but that is something that I'm, we're going to be bringing back to the senior staff to really decipher and better understand the patterns between the different roles of people because of our two responding groups that were the highest, parents and guardians, as Director Klein mentioned, but staff were also the second highest responding group. And while there is some consistencies in their perceptions of how well we did, there are some significant differences in terms of what staff think versus what our parents think. And that could be for a number of reasons. It could be because communication, it could be because we were early on in the process or everything was just first being implemented. So there is definitely data that we can continue to look at to better understand the the lower respondents in terms of like they're not at all and only a little bits. Thank you.
Great. I'd be, I'd love to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see another hand up there. Trustee person?
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I just want to say I'm a bit sick tonight, so please forgive me for any inarticulacy. But I just want to start off by saying that this looks absolutely fantastic from a student perspective. I can definitely see how this would be helpful. I know so many students who are looking, you know, to start clubs and leadership initiatives, and this is such a great way to identify different needs of the school community. So just thank you to everyone who contributed to this. My question was, actually, it was a perfect segue from trustee Kennedy's question. Could you provide me with some more information in terms of the amount of secondary students who contributed to this data? And if this represents a large or small sample in this context, because we would definitely like to improve on this.
Sure, I'll I'll start and I'll tip it over to to Dr. Colmore. I do want to say to to segue segue on your segue that the opportunity at the end of the month, as you're aware, that I will be visiting student senate and the senators and meeting with them. And I know they'll be polite and kind because you know and part of it is to talk, well, actually, the whole, the whole focus is to talk about the MYSP. And so you'll probably see a lot of this stuff again. So don't don't tell them about that. And it gives me the opportunity to say to them, there are tons of opportunities for you to to give us feedback right then and there for one, but other opportunities as well. I do want to mention that there's really almost an endless number of opportunities for students to give feedback. I'll give you one simple for our student trustees here, because you will have memories of being eight years old or so in grade three, writing EQO. And then you wrote it again, and then you wrote it again, and then you probably wrote it again. So not that you failed it, but that you have had different opportunities, a different key transition periods. You'll remember too, the student questionnaires as part of it. Some of the questionnaires have questions that go back provincially decades to get a sense of how our students provincially are doing with regard to all sorts of things. How are we seeing girls in terms of their love competence or confidence in math? That's important. It's an important measure in terms of how the province and teachers and boards have responded. One small example, but think of the thousands of students that contribute to that data as well. But Dr. Colmore, can you give us a greater sense of where some of this comes from? In terms of that dashboard, there's a ton of sources. I'm sure you know them all.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to throw this one to Nick. He's impatiently waiting to talk. So Nick, could you share the response rates for the school climate surveys?
Yep. Absolutely. So through you, Mr. Chair. So
Absolutely. So through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so we included on the MYSP a number of data points from the school climate survey held last year. Um, and there we got a secondary, uh, number of secondary respondents was six thousand fourteen. The number of elementary respondents was nine thousand one hundred fifty-nine. So those are, are really, really strong response rates for the school climate survey, over uh, fifty percent for secondary, um, approaching that for elementary. Um, so we're, we're quite happy with that. And for the EQAO, we heard from, uh, on the survey, as Director Klein mentioned, we heard from over two thousand respondents for each of our EQAO survey questions included here, which is also very strong. It's over eighty-eight percent of those who took the EQAO in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, so we really, we, for most of the data points, we have quite strong response rates and we're happy with that.
Thank you. No further questions, uh, comments? That's again, your hands up.
Oh, I take it down. Well, just lastly, we, we talked about it before, but a director's report is included for the MYSP. But we'll have a director's report next meeting.
Yes. So thank you, trustees, uh, once again. Uh, thank you, Director Klein, for presenting the multi-strategic plan. Best report in year one, giving, giving, and uh, it took a lot of time and, and trustees to get together. This was signed, multi-strategic plan of trustee, uh, and vision for the school also. So thank you for monitoring. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. So thank you for monitoring the plan for this year, and I will look forward to progress, great progress next year. Uh, with more respondents and more sponsored surveys, stakeholders, and we got a good feedback. And uh, so also thank you for all the work done, Dr. Colmore and your team. Uh, so number one title, eleven point two, uh, Rosary Apostolate School, the Director Klein, please present your report.
Right. Uh, thank you, Chair, and I'm going to um, uh, also, as I did with the last report, just uh, convey some thank yous to uh, Superintendent Nahr and Superintendent Kroll for the work they've done to create uh, this report. Um, our consultant, uh, Siobhan Crossen, and our assistant chaplain and the faith formation lead, Chilean Federico. Together, we contributed to creating this. So I want to thank them as well. Trustees are aware this does stem from uh, some uh, uh, offshoots of what we had been doing back in June, a long time ago. And we were asked to come up with a report regarding uh, this item. And so we have that before you know, I know you've read it. I'll just briefly, uh, just highlight a few things within it. Just first of all, that our schools here and our Catholic schools across the province are committed to fostering communities of faith, where prayer is a central part of daily life for our students and for our staff. And as such, we encourage and we give opportunities for our students and staff to experience different prayer experiences or modalities of prayer, traditional and contemplative. We do that through the, the curriculum and the uh, the programs that we have that are vetted by the uh, Ontario's Catholic bishops and uh, given their imprimatur. Uh, the rosary, as we are, are all aware of, as Catholics, is a foundational Catholic prayer. And it's taught across all grade levels using approved resources. Schools may also invite parish volunteers to lead rosary prayer sessions outside instructional time. And uh, these, of course, going back to what I'm very passionate about, and we're all passionate about, certainly reinforce the believing and other components of our, of our faith. In fact, when we talk about, we are distinctly Catholic. So that's how we nurture our student spirits, their development of their spirits and their relationship with Jesus. So a few highlights, uh, daily prayer integration. Whether in classroom prayer, liturgical celebrations and seasonal prayer services occur in all our schools throughout. Rosary education, and by the way, you saw some of the data earlier that came up in the uh, on our website showing the responses of students and staff in terms of their uh, perceptions of faith development uh, in our schools as well. Rosary education taught kindergarten through grade twelve using approved resources like growing faith, growing Christ. That is the one. Of course, if we don't get funding for that, we is for to ensure that there's funding for those resources to give our teachers and educators uh, the tools they need to be uh, again, catechists and uh, faith leaders approve curriculum resources. And these are all come, again, the Assembly of Catholic Bishops Ontario and the Institute for Catholic Education. So we are in sync with uh, everything that is properly vetted in the province. We have volunteer involved in our schools, parish volunteers, et cetera. Uh, again, ensuring though that there's staff support for them, whether it's a volunteer for a basketball team or a volunteer uh, to do anything else with students, uh, that just can't happen on its own. I think we all understand that. There has to be staff supervision and staff support. Uh, and where that's not possible, that makes it much more challenging, if not impossible. Writing prayer forms that we, again, as Catholics know, there's many uh, roads to prayer that uh, some of us have learned, some of us were taught by parents or grandparents. They include certainly Lord's Prayer, Christian Meditation, Electio Divina, Visio Divina, that is again, digging into scripture and allowing it to wash over you and inform you, led to the hours, let name saints, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Gives the traditions of our living faith. Uh, we have supports in our schools from faith animators, chaplains, uh, who together provide resources and guidance for staff to foster a peripheral school culture. We ask our teachers uh, to do much more than in public system. We're asking them to also, again, help foster the spiritual needs of our students, which makes them uh, the best teachers around. Strategic alignment, of course. See through the report that we have worked to reinforce Catholic identity and supports through faith formation for our uh, staff, obviously for our, our uh, students. Be happy to take, Chair, any questions that we might have. Again, I'm not sure if at this point uh, my two uh, superintendent friends want to add anything to it right now. Otherwise, I'm sure all three of us will be ready for any, any questions you might have.
Superbend, go ahead.
Sure, through you, Chair. Um, one thing I would add as well, um, uh, it's, it's in the report, but um, you know, in enhancing the homeschool and parish relationship, um, one of the projects we're working on this year in Yorkshire with the Diocese is uh, what we call Conversations in the Spirit, but it's um, it's in the, in the uh, same mode as uh, the Senate has taken place in Rome. Uh, we are going to have facilitated conversations between our pastors and our principals uh, over the course of the year, uh, which will feed into next year as well. And I think um, you know, open to the Holy Spirit to, to bring about what initiatives we need to do and, and how we can enhance those relationships. Um, so that's just another piece that I would, I would add to that.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent Kroll, want to add anything?
No, I could right now. Thank you for answering questions that come up.
Thank you, trustees. Uh, any questions, comments? Let's do, we care about.
I had one, I have two. One is was, um, as you mentioned here, there was a letter. Um, there was a letter that Bishop Crosby supported, here it is. This approach to have volunteers such as the Rosary Apostolate can participate in the recitation of the rosary with students is supported by Bishop Crosby, Bishop of Hamilton in the letter of two thousand and eighteen. I was sort of expecting uh, that to be included in the attendance. Is it possible to see that letter? Because I don't remember that. I thought that the Rosary Apostolate actually stopped in our schools in two thousand and eighteen.
Uh, Superbend, go.
So, yeah, yes, through you. So um, we're able to have volunteers come in regardless of their title. Um, but, but if we want to have volunteers come in and pray the rosary with our students in an extracurricular format. So if they want to come in and have a rosary lunch club or, or whatnot, then, then Bishop Crosby does support that. But to come in and teach the rosary during curriculum time and instructional time, uh, that's where, you know, that's, that's been left to uh, the religion programs that we have where the rosary is built into it, as opposed to having uh, volunteers come in and do teach. Does that help?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kroll.
Um, and my next point was, um, because I, usually our reports have the motion that we voted on. This one didn't have it. So just going back here, uh, back to the actual motion that was passed. And it did say, first of all, yes, it's amazing, all the good, the good work that's being done from, say that, um, the faith. Um, it says here, uh, be it further resolved that a plan be presented in this report to restart or enhance or support these programs at HCDSB in collaboration with the Diocese of Hamilton and parishes in all communities across the region to support this valuable homeschool parish initiative along with this timeline. Along with the timeline. So I didn't really see that in here. Is there, that some of their conversations or?
Yeah, sure. Well, I'll start certainly by, by commenting on that. Well, I think one of the things that Superintendent Nahr was mentioning, I regret that I hadn't mentioned it as we started the presentation, although trustees, I know you've been made aware by my weekly reports, that we've uh, have engaged, starting months ago, in actually a, a beautiful opportunity to experience senatorality by working with our pastors in each of our uh, parishes. And that involves, again, uh, all the opportunities to listen, uh, to learn and uh, to then be open to the spirit and how we might move ahead. I, we consider that as a big opportunity for that, to plan. If, if there's a plan uh, to be done, we can't do a plan that involves the parishes without listening to the parishes. So I think that would be putting the uh, the, the cart before the horse when it comes to that. But I'll see what my colleagues here want to add to that.
Like add something about the question, the little timeline.
Sure, certain through you, uh, Chair. I, I think those combinations are really important. Part of what we've been doing the last couple of years is working to make sure the parishes and the paristries understand what's in the curriculum, right? Because the curriculum has changed and is changing. So we've been reaching out to our parish crees. We've been doing trainings that they understand in the diocese was actually in the curriculum. I think it's, if you look at the report, part of the report that I, that something did, there's definitely intentionality behind what's in the curriculum and what's being taught in the classroom, which I think really is what underpins what Bishop Crosby was getting at back in twenty eighteen was, it's already been done in the classroom. Like these things are already being taught even in these grades. We don't need to bring in women outside to teach something that already exists in the curriculum. Um, so in terms of the conversations that we're having with our parishes and ways that we can enhance, I think part of it is education on both sides. Here's what we're doing as Catholics, you know, what can you do to help support us uh, in our Catholic schools, if that makes sense. So I think it's worth a conversation stage right now rather than education station.
So, but I, I don't think it answers the question, uh, timelines. Uh, I, I rather to, I don't say, uh, have a plan there. So I wouldn't consider the vote complete, uh, because it's missing the key element that was in the motion. So I would like to, yeah, good question. So can we have the report looked at and brought back with angry?
Uh, the answer is, I guess, the short answer would be yes. Uh, the, the other part to that is I have no idea how we would do that without, without getting some consensus from our parishes. And, and I think squaring some of the uh, realities that Superintendent Kroll has mentioned with regard to what the bishop of this diocese has articulated around this as well. So more than happy, but uh, with all due respect and his great frankness, I think you're putting staff in a, in a difficult position to do that. Not impossible, again.
Yeah. So uh, so I, I, I would tend to agree that there's no timeline. The motion is not, uh, bad. We'll put this on the motions, uh, what do you call that, arising from real speed. Uh, so, very completely opposed. I didn't read it. It's a great report. Don't get me wrong. Lots of positive stuff, but the timeline that was specified is not in the report. So he'll put this item on motions.
It'd be interesting parliamentary question around, no, notice motion that are difficult, if not impossible to carry out. I'm, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
So we can, we'll do our best. We can have a conversation, but go for the side and, you know, fair. Uh, yeah, trustees have comments, just a question. Um, sorry, just a follow-up with Superintendent Kroll saying, is there a schedule of when you were meeting the parishes? And the reason I ask is that I was speaking to the priest last week, and he didn't seem to really know much about the board or what we were doing. So I'm not sure if he's been engaged. Uh, so could you just provide it, uh, like a schedule of when you're meeting with them? Because um,
I can't. What I can say is that they have been here in this very room. All the, all the parish priests have been invited here. They had the dean himself was here not that long ago. The bishop has articulated from what I can gather, as clearly as a vicar of Christ can, what expectations are around engaging with schools and participating in this process. So I can tell you that uh, about a month from now, I've got the date a little fuzzy. We're going to be meeting uh, one of our parishes, all of us, uh, parish pastors and reps and then, and, and an even number of people from our schools to begin to engage in this.
So should this clarify, so you know? So this is others, I'll, I'll take a comment. Yeah. Uh, we have entrusted uh, a job to our director and director works with all uh, all stakeholders, including the dinner relays. So let's just leave the job to the director and staff to work with it. The priest uh, that he spoke to has concerns. They have to approach the dinner and they have a path to be involved. So I just like to leave it at that. And uh, let's not discuss the roles of uh, individuals out here. So with that, I see the other, for the comment, I really want to, I read the report, I like the report. It's very well presented. Uh, we do a lot of things in, in our schools, uh, right from JK to Big Bell. Uh, and uh, I want to thank all trustees for supporting this thing, uh, this motion. Uh, we presented the MYSP findings in year one. We are doing well. The, the living is concerned there. Uh, and I'm just looking forward to this homeschool parish collaboration that's opened and now talked about how to grow it in the next years and for years to come. So with that, I want to thank staff for the work that you did. There is an open item, no doubt, in that motion. We need to deal with that uh, in the next uh, uh, we, uh, meetings coming forward. We fear challenges. We can talk about it and discuss that. So with that, thank you, uh, Director Klein. Thank you, staff, for presenting that uh, report. And uh, we shall move on to our next item, eleven point three, construction report. Superintendent Murray, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have the construction report for October. Um, you can see in the photo and uh, the building pad there is ready to go. Uh, we are still waiting on approvals for our phase two site works, uh, which will be in this, all the stormwater, uh, which is a, a large site in, uh, that will take place, uh, take place of the creek that's there right now. And then the remaining fell on the back portion of the site. And then in tandem, we're working forward on, on building permits there as well. I think this is already construction and then that's probably early in the new year, on the actual building portion. Would have any questions the trustees have on?
Thank you, Superintendent Murray. Uh, Mr. Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Superintendent Merrick. Um, uh, I'm late to the party where we're at with this, uh, this project. So have, um, have the tenders been lent? Yeah, they're lent, okay.
We know, sir. We, we haven't set tenders, no. I've just out yet. Um, we still have some site works, things to work through with the town. Um, you know, you may or may not know this is right beside St. Ceteri. Um, so those land that we purchased many, many years ago, it is a lot part of the subdivision where we bought it. Um, so we are playing the valle for there as well and buying unsurfaced land, which is why you have to go through all these processes to service the land and the stormwater, tie it in with the neighboring properties there as well. So we're working through that piece right now. It's a lot of extra work that we're, frankly, we're not accustomed to doing when we buy kind of serviced land on, on other sites, but um, get, we're getting there on it and it's a, it's a process, but we're getting there.
Have there been any permit issues? I know there's challenges with St. Ceteri. Uh, it at least has the roundabout. It at least has the roundabout, whereas this school won't. Has the the town of Milton pushed back on the design at all?
To your chair, not so much on the on the traffic issues. Did you know that when you add, you know, thousands of students to a site there and like you have, it's a section of Louisiana Road has St. Ceteri, Milton eleven, French Catholic Elementary School, and then over here as well. There's a lot of students and a lot of traffic in the area, all at kind of set times in the morning and in the afternoon. We do do a lot of traffic study to try and mitigate that. I mean, there are simulations. They don't capture actualities in the end, but we've done lots of work on that. So I think we're we're comfortable with the the traffic piece. The struggles we're in right now is that we're, it's it's a unserved piece of land. We all and we're feeding into farmland that's up with us. So you have to keep all the flows. We actually don't have any stormwater ponds for even St. Ceteri. If you go to St. Ceteri, you notice the very different looking site. We actually have ditches and swales there. You can get all of our stormwater. We don't have pipes to drop the stormwater into. So it's just a different setup to how we designed that site. Lots of extra permitting and approvals to get through. Part of it's our own fault. When we designed St. Ceteri, we actually moved the flood plain from, it was on St. Ceteri site. We moved it over to the site side, which we intended to sell at the time. We then decided to build Milton eleven there. We're not removing it for that on the road, but it's just that all those processes in place to make sure that we're checking all these boxes and and setting up a subdivision that's good for residence.
Okay, thank you. And and once you start construction around the twelve months?
And your chair, this will be probably a little bit longer, maybe like sixteen months. It it is us our first three-story elementary, so it's it's bigger than, it'll be our biggest elementary, and it's a three-story as well, so. Yeah, we built some in seven, eight months. I would count on that again, but it's probably in the twelve to sixteen month range, we said.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Murphy. Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Shall now move on to our next order of this information. Student trustee update. Student trustees, please present your report.
Yeah. Let's make this quick. So we'll begin off with achieving. So achieving is a fundamental, or the board, it's always been extremely important to the H C D S B, and it's a responsibility of every school and school board to make to make sure that every student can achieve the great things. So far in the reverse, the student senate, the achievement and leadership subcommittee held its first meeting. They discussed some proposals, including some to help students apply to international schools, workshops, SAT and ACT explanations and much more. I will likely give you a exact proposal by next meeting. Right now, we're just kind of cycling through ideas. And the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, they also held their introductory session where they just sort of organized all of their members and they discussed appropriate use of board-approved websites and how they'd like their subcommittee to look forward. And moreover, to allow the senators to have better understanding of the multi-year strategic plan. We've sort of had that problem in the past. Superintendent Del Sorto, who unfortunately isn't here, and Director Klein will be giving a presentation on October twenty ninth, which is also the date of our next Senate General Meeting. And we're excited to see how the sounds work. We'll continue to allow, to align with the N Y S P in the future.
I'll take it. I'll say a little bit more. So for believing, as we progress through the school year, a range of faith-based activities has opened us. A special item I'd like to highlight, which is my personal favorite thing that I've attended this year, of course, besides these meetings, was a I can't properly pronounce it, Diocese of Mass, which served as an opening liturgy to the school year in which all vice principals and administrative representatives in our community were invited. This mass highlighted reaffirming the importance of our Catholic faith and community within our school, within our school board. The mass was hosted by the French school board, so everything was held in French. And the choir is also in French. Furthermore, the Holton Catholic, the Holton Catholic District School were played listed by your, by everyone's respective student trustees. Our flag was also lifted by me, even though I dropped the flag while I was walking. The turnout was wonderful. It was honestly a beautiful mass.
All right, so I can continue from there. So next up, our next pillar is belonging. So this month, we really focused on, you know, targeting equity, diversity and inclusion through all of our subcommittee meetings. And we, as Robert here mentioned, we held our very first Senate meeting. And the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee had one of our largest turnouts. So we expect to see some great proposals from them in the coming months. Additionally, my fellow trustees and I have established a goal of effectively using a lot of the resources that we already have available to our board. So along with Director Klein and Superintendent Del Sorto, we also reached out to an indigenous advisor, Ms. Sherry Sable, to give a presentation at our next meeting on developing thoughtful land acknowledgements and carrying out reconciliation-focused initiatives at student senators' respective schools. On top of that, we also work with the Faith and Action Committee to develop an Instagram post for September thirtieth, which was National Day, the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. And we just, we really hope to further establish reconciliation as an ongoing and meaningful process and not merely a box to check. So just to conclude, we hope to continue utilizing H C D S B resources to carry out a series of great little workshops throughout the year and with different topics and themes, just to help student senators, some powers student senators through leadership and aspect over here.
And finally, to finish it off with the coming, this year we hope to engage meaningfully with diverse subcommittees and highlight their milestones and accomplishments. The Environmental Stewardship Subcommittee had its great meeting, sorry, had its first meeting last Friday. Sorry, seeing double, it's a bit late. So they mainly, they discussed a range of proposals. They're considering an anti-trash, an anti-trash campaign, proper recycling advocacy and helmet awareness. And we hope to see more development when it comes to these proposals when the presentation that, if you recall, by Director Klein and Superintendent Del Sorto occurs. As mentioned by Valini, we also have to, we also have a miss, a presentation with Ms. Sable. She will be giving on personalized land acknowledgements, so that the student senate can be more mindful of the importance of the land, because we have been using the same land acknowledgement for over five years now. And through this project, we hope to empower our student senators. And finally, this is a very much preliminary project, but we hope to sorry. But we hope to, you know, get guest speakers from all across the board, sort of speak with student senate, because we have found that unfortunately, student senate seems to be pretty behind a little bit, a lot of things. They're not as integrated with the boards as a lot of the other programs are. So we hope to sort of do that. I think that is it. And, yeah.
Thank you, trustees. It's ten fifty nine. We need to do some housekeeping here. We have very long meeting today, this is our stuff, but we have a meeting by thirty minutes. So we have a motion to extend the meeting by thirty minutes. That's a careful one. Who's looking for a second there? Justine Murphy, all in favor? Any of course? Saying none online? Saying none, motion carries. Please extend the meeting by thirty minutes and we have a little more business to do. Thank you, trustees. So student trustees have completed the delivered their report. Trustees, any questions or comments for student trustees? Questions, comments? Once again, trustees, thank you so much for presenting your report. As usual, you're doing a fantastic job. He's got a voice available. Really appreciate it. It's just a little bit late today, so excuses. We shall move on to our next item, twelve point two, O C A S T A update. My chair, Oban Chanara, do you have any update for us? Any global updates?
I do. Thank you to you, Mr. Chair. And trustee Hannah, if you're seeing double, I'm in three D at my age right now, so. Good, I've got twenty-nine minutes to speak about Ox. So that's great. Sit back and relax. No, really, all I have to say right now, as you've seen the emails, colleagues, that they're they're starting registration for the January Oxta seminar. It's always good. There's always a lot of P D there. I'm sure there'll be a lot of updates because there's a lot going on right now. So please register early bird, saves us a little bit of money. So that's really all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee. Questions? Saying that, we shall move on to, I can remember, thirty correspondences. We have two correspondence. At number forty, open question period, Director Klein, do you have any questions submitted for the question?
No one.
Thank you, Director Klein. Item fifteen, in camera, we do not have to go in camera. So reservations regarding absentee, we have all trustees present today. And finally, we move on to seventeen, the achievement and closing prayer. Not yet, not yet, not yet. I'm going to just a minute. Before we, the bowling career is in the month of October and my last day is so I share it's want to say a few thank yous. Thank you to all of us, to you, and thanks to the staff, Rosie and Elizabeth. We've done all amazing work in the background, keeping me on track, keeping documentation and, you know, all the things that need to be done, greater client and staff, paying for the support and help to help. Our board has been functioning really well, all trusted by others. And thank you to my chief, Oban Chanara, for your work as a regional. There's a lot of work happening behind this. So so thank you, everybody. And with that, I shall move to achievement. We have a motion to change, trustee Saunders, looking for a second there. Trustee Murphy, seconds, all in favor? And we are both saying none. The motion carries, trustee Karen, please lead us a little bit.
Okay, thank you. So October is the month dedicated to Our Lady, and as well, it is Respect Life Month. And tomorrow is the feast day of Saint John Paul the Second. So in an effort to highlight and merge all these events, I'd like to focus on Saint John Paul the Second being a champion for the respect for human life in all stages from conception to natural death. He wrote the Encyclical, the Gospel of Life, and this year, twenty twenty-five, marks its thirtieth anniversary. The message of life in this Encyclical is even more needed today in our country of Canada as abortions reach close to a hundred thousand a year. That is almost three hundred babies killed per day. And very, very sadly, here in Halton, we lose on average five babies a day, our future students, to abortion. As well, in twenty twenty-three, in Canada, fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-three people sadly chose suicide through made legislation. However, this is the Jubilee year of hope. We keep hope before us always. And I'll now pray the prayer of Saint John Paul the Second to Our Lady found at the closing of the Gospel of Life Encyclical. Please join me in the sign of our faith in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. And as we, the pilgrim people, the people of life and for life, make our way in confidence towards a new heaven and a new earth, we look to her, who is for us a sign of sure hope and solace. Oh, Mary, bright dawn of the new world, mother of the living, to you do we entrust the cause of life. Look down, oh, mother, upon the vast numbers of babies not allowed to be born, of the poor whose lives are made difficult, of men and women who are victims of brutal violence, of the elderly and the sick, killed by indifference or out of misguided mercy. Grant that all who believe in your son may proclaim the gospel of life with honesty and love to the people of our time. Obtain for them the grace to accept the gospel as a gift ever new, the joy of celebrating it with gratitude throughout their lives and the courage to bear witness to it resolutely in order to build together with all people of goodwill the civilization of truth and love to the praise and glory of God, the Creator and lover of life. Amen. In the Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Very close together. Thank you for a great meeting. Good night.